Good evening.
And if we learn otherwise, we'll work through that down the road. But for the members of the board, when I call your name, please say that you can hear me. Let's go through here. Justine.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Here.
Chris.
Yes.
And Armand.
Yes, here.
Okay. And as I know, I know there's a number of staff just for the record. Hold on one second. For the record, Greg is not with us this evening. Megan will be acting in the role of town administrator. And she is fully prepped and ready to go. So I'm certain we'll have a wonderful meeting. So again, there's a lot of people scheduled to speak, so I'm not going to ask each individual to jump in. And when your time comes to speak, you will certainly be allowed and everybody's allowed to speak if they have something to say that's relevant to them. you will certainly be allowed and everybody's allowed to speak if they have something to say that's relevant to the topic at hand. Good evening. The, this open meeting of the Managed Select Board is being conducted remotely via Zoom. So everybody will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment as well when, when called upon. The board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, I'll add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, we may, as board, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to send, needing to deliberate on any matter that comes up during public comment. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attending, well, all attendees are participating by Zoom. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except for executive session materials, which there are not any, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I note otherwise. Now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before I do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of the members of the board inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until your name is called. If you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response that's expected, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If anybody wishes to engage in colloquy with the members, please do so through me. And we again want to make sure that anybody speaking from the public identifies themselves. And that would include an address, please, if you're a main resident. And for items with public comment, which most of our items will allow for, after members have spoken, I'll afford public comment as follows. I'll ask anybody who wishes to speak to identify their names and addresses. And then once we know who wants to speak, we'll call on each and afford three minutes for any comments. So with that, we can move forward to the first item on our agenda, which is public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? If so, just raise, raise your hand electronically or however we do it. I don't see that anybody has any, so we will move on to item number two on our agenda, which is acceptance of minutes. We have a set of minutes from August 3rd. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of August 3rd, 2021, as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments or questions about the minutes as presented? Without any, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by, wow, we have to take a roll call vote because we're remote. So Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Is there a motion to accept correspondence?
Move to accept and approve correspondence in A through L as shown and to use digital signatures if so required.
Second.
Motion's made the second, and does anybody have any questions on any of the items A through L?
No question, just a nice statement to see that the golf course is doing well. Looking at the report, they're really doing well.
That is good news. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Justine.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Armon.
Yes.
And where'd Jeff go?
He's here. Oh.
I don't see Jeff any longer. So we will. There he is. Can you hear us, Jeff?
Sorry, there was a forced restart on my end. I hope it won't happen again.
No, 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 no problems at all. Correspondence. Did you miss when we were talking about any questions on them?
I have no questions on correspondence.
Okay, and the others have already voted to approve, and are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and I am a yes as well. Consent agenda, now item number four. There are three items on the consent agenda. The Coolidge Park, use of Coolidge Park by Metro West Kung Fu, Crow Field by the Asper Valley Boys and Girls Club for Todd for soccer. And the appointment, this is a rocket ship going through the ranks of the planning board as the last meeting, I think it was that we, that we appointed Bob Brown, five and two meetings ago, as an associate member. Now he is being appointed as a full member to, to replace the unfortunate outgoing chair, who I think we should extend our gratitude and thanks to Greg Tuzalo for a great tenure on the planning board through some difficult and historic times for the town of Maynard, and Greg did a fabulous job. So anyway, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I will move to approve consent agenda items, A and B as presented and authorize use of digital signatures if approved. It's separate proceed. Do you want me to add that in?
I, I think it's okay to add it in since it is part of the consent.
Agreed. I'll move to approve, in that case, the entire consent agenda items, A through C as presented and authorize use of digital signatures as approved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call. Justine.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is the use of town property, specifically Memorial Park by the Origami Place Museum Community for two dates, September 4th and September 19th. Megan, can you give us a little bit of background on this?
Yes, absolutely. So Lisa Corkman is affiliated with the Origami Museum. That is, I believe, affiliated with the Cultural Council. She's a grant recipient. And she's, she's on the call here, but the, the purpose is to have a community event to participate in a Maynard Folds project. And so she was hoping to use Veterans Memorial Park on those two dates for, you know, a distance, but gathering site to, to do this event. And so Lisa is on the, on the line. If you have questions for her as well.
Yep.
I'm from sixty, Lisa Corkman from sixty to sixty Mason, Mason Street Unit to Maynard. I, I received the grant through the Maynard Cultural Council to do a virtual origami exhibition call and just call Maynard Folds. And this would be an opportunity to bring the community together to fold origami. I have about thirty books. I'll put them in a cart and people will sit on blankets and socially distance. And I'll put a couple tables out for photography so people can create their submissions for the contest. The fourth is the general date. The eleventh is the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. So I also want to make it a little bit of a memorial service. So it would be nice to have flags and make remembrance screens for the victims of nine eleven, have something for people to take home. And feel like this experience is really meaningful and, and tie the community together in a solemn occasion.
Thank you, Lisa. I just want to clarify. Are you looking for three dates or two dates?
Two dates, the, the fourth and the eleventh.
Okay, my agenda says the nineteenth. Is that just a typo or was I, am I looking at an old?
I think that was a typo.
Yeah, the motion, sorry about that, David. The motion says the eleventh, but the, the agenda item says the nineteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, the deadline for the contest is the nineteenth, so that might have been where the error was made.
Oh, no, no problem at all. Any questions from the board about this event? Hearing none. We'll take a roll up. Have we made the motion?
You have to make the motion.
Yeah, we need the motion.
I'll move to approve the use of Memorial Park for the Origami Place Museum Community's Maynard Folds Contest on September 4th and 11th, 2021, from three to six PM, in accordance with all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines. And I will authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Lisa, do you plan on advertising this event somehow?
Yes, I have a mailing list. And also I've had something in the Beacon Villager about the contest. It's on my website. And, and a spot about opportunities for the Origami Museum. I had something in the Action Unlimited. I'm planning on getting something new and that, that, does that sound appropriate?
Oh, yeah.
It would be great if it could be in the town hall newsletter. My phone keeps ringing.
I, Megan, Megan, did you hear that?
I did. Yeah, I have to get another one out. Absolutely.
I had a quick question, David. I'm not sure if it's just more of an operational thing that, you know, the request for tables and chairs or flags, who would she reach out to actually arrange that with?
Typically, if we need to use that type of thing, it's the DPW, but we had a problem with that on another issue where a private event wanted to use some of the public property and we didn't approve it.
I can speak to that, David.
Go ahead.
We, we're not able to provide equipment for this event, so we won't be doing.
Or flags, no flags, not the tables or chairs nor the flags.
I know we can't do tables and chairs. I don't recall if we have flags to share. So I had to.
I'm just thinking little flags that just,
Yeah.
that can be put in the ground temporarily and then I can, you can claim them back.
You, if you plant it, you know, putting the flags in, little flags isn't a problem. It's just the town doesn't have them to supply. You may want to contact the, 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 not the VFW, but the, what are they? The Legion, the American Legion, who plants flags, they may have some extra flags that might be available for that, but the town doesn't really provide the small little flags.
Okay.
The cemetery department might have some too.
Okay.
From past holidays.
Justin, go ahead.
Thanks, David. Justin, Department of DPW Director. So part of the application, I didn't see the request for flags. Typically, the flags are purchased through the Veterans Agent through a grant process. They receive them from the state. Reaching out to Wayne Staley might be a situation where they may have access from other events such as what Mr. De Silva has just alluded to. Are you looking to put these flags in the ground and leave them? Or is this something that you're just looking to potentially hand out, Lisa?
I, I was just inspired to ask for something that would help making it more memorial type of occasion. I hadn't had a set plan for. I don't necessarily need them. I just thought it would kind of bring a sense of of, of unity within this country, remembering the solemn occasion.
Lisa, we can follow up. My only question was based off of some other communities use like a flag situation. They almost do a memorial within a lawn service based on how many people passed away, but they tend to leave it for long periods of time, and that would potentially interfere with operations and maintenance. So I'd like to plan for that. But if it's more of like, hey, if we have a couple hundred or a hundred and you want to pass them out more to like your, your participants to bring home, I think that's something that may be manageable depending on what the Veterans Agent has for leftover flags.
Will someone be in touch with me to follow up?
Yeah, I'll put you in touch with the Veterans Agent, Lisa. No problem.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the question, Justine, and it's good clarification. Good luck with this, Lisa. I hope that it is a wonderful event. So not yet. We have to take a vote. So we have to take a vote. And it has to be roll call. Justine.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Lisa, it is approved.
This means the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with it.
Yeah.
All right. Item number six is the acceptance of a land gift off of Parker Street and Wisteria Lane. The new development down off of Route 27 that is just beyond Bose Hill on the left-hand side. There is a parcel of land behind that development, sort of behind the side that is being asked to be gifted to the community by the, the developer. And the Conservation Commission, I understand, has already voted in favor of accepting this. But in order for it to become official, it needs to come before the board. So Megan, if I have left anything out in that summary, let me know. And then we will have some discussion here. I have one quick question, but.
Sure. I think the other points to mention just there that it's mostly wetlands. It's not planned for public access. But it's more to protect the habitat and also the water, the drinking supply, water drinking supply in that area. And so our town council has reviewed it. The title's clear and it would be, you know, just for conservation for those purposes that I mentioned.
Any questions from other members of the board? My question is, Megan, do we have an idea, presuming we lose tax revenue slight presumably because it's no longer become, it's not taxable land if it gets transferred over to the town because it doesn't belong to somebody, it belongs to us. Do you have any idea approximately how much that might be?
I don't. I can look into that and get back to you.
Well, it probably doesn't matter because we'll, we'll vote on it this evening. But just, just wonder if it was a lot of money, then it might be an issue of concern. I don't anticipate that it would be given that it's wetlands and non-buildable land. But you know, if it was prime real estate that we're going to be losing revenue on and it would be, you know, presumably that would be developable, so it would be worth something to the developer too. But anyway, any other questions from the board? All right. Is there a motion?
I will move to authorize the Conservation Commission to accept as a gift a 6.592 acre portion of Assessor's Parcel 29-6 depicted as proposed Lot 6 on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan Old Bay Road LLC, Zero Parker Street, Map 29, Lot 6, Town of Maynard, Middlesex County, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, owned by Old Bay Road LLC pursuant to General Law Chapters 40, Section 8C.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? One more thought just came to my mind as the motion was being read. I know that when we look at our safe harbor protection relative to 40B and all of that, that one of the ways that we meet or actually the, the, the prime way that we meet safe harbor here in Maynard, which was established back during the, the 129 Parker Discussion, is through the percentage of land that is owned by the town and therefore not developable. So I presume this goes on the rolls of that and actually helps us in our safe harbor efforts.
Yes, I believe you're correct on that.
Bill, do you know if that's true?
I believe that's true. The, the, the thing is, as I understand, that was, that piece of property was not developable in the first place, so it would have been calculated in our land area.
It would have already been included.
Yeah, yeah, because to, to meet that, to meet the criteria, we had to count land that was buildable. And that was, I think that was always designated as wetlands, so.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Jeff, go ahead, Justin.
I just want to add something that the DPW strongly supports this effort. Acquiring that piece of parcel that is gifted to us not only provides water quality protection, but we are exploring well opportunities within the Corkwell Field Site. And that we have to meet minimum setbacks for our well establishments of a hundred feet, excuse me, of a hundred feet minimum for Zone One protection. By allowing the acquisition of this property allows flexibility within that area to try to acquire future well sources. So I strongly encourage this.
Thanks for that insight. Any other comments, questions? We will take a roll call. Justine.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Mr. Chair, would you mind if I just jump in with one quick thing? Um, I just, I want, I wanted to, uh, introduce a new staff member that, that, um, I just saw it joined. If you don't mind, Robert Maynard has joined the call and he's the new assistant town clerk. So he just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of introduce himself or, you know, you can see him. Um, he is in the window every day. He's working closely with Joanna, who's also on here and, uh, they're a great team and I just want to welcome, welcome Robert here today.
Yeah, he's got a great name. Welcome.
Yeah, it's nice to meet everybody and be here.
You too, and, uh, you were destined to work here, so.
Right.
Good luck. I, I actually was in the, in town hall last, uh, I don't know what day it was, Tuesday or Wednesday, and you were there when I walked in. I had to go sign a few documents and I came back to come in to see you. Joanna can testify to this and you were gone to lunch, so.
Oh, God.
He was already out to lunch, huh?
So, uh, so welcome, good luck, and I hope I will have an opportunity to come in and see you in person.
Well, I hope that happens too. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Megan, for, uh, for taking the time. All right, um, we are now having a joint meeting of the, with the, uh, select board and the board of health. I don't know if the board of health has a, uh, the, uh, they have to call their meeting to order.
Yeah, I'd recommend that. Um, we have two members at least, um, on the call here. So Kathy McMillan's the chair. So Kathy, if you want to call the meeting to order and I can, I can take notes for that too.
You're on mute, Kathy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy McMillan, Maynard Board of Health Chair, um, calling these joint meeting with the select board to order at seven twenty-four P M. Lisa is on. Lisa?
Yep, I see Lisa. Yeah.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I know Jody could not make it tonight.
Lisa, you're breaking up a little bit. If, uh, it might have just been that one. Can you speak again? Just say hello.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, that sounded good.
Okay, I'm moving a little closer here. Okay, I second the opening of the meeting.
All right, um, and the, the, the real purpose here was to, to talk about the COVID nineteen policy for face coverings. You all saw that, uh, about a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago, uh, Greg issued a memorandum to the staff and basically to, uh, to the town residents that the town buildings, he would request that we have face coverings, uh, for anybody, you know, masks for anybody who is in town hall, working in town hall, visiting town hall, and also other town properties exclusive of the schools since town hall does not have authority over what goes on in the school buildings. Um, and I don't know if we have the authority with the library. I see that they have, uh, put out a sign asking for it, but I, I was under the assumption that our, our policy covered the library, but, um, and, and that's great. This, uh, you know, they have a sign out now, so they're covered. But anyway, um, Kathy, why don't you take it or Megan, uh, as to what, uh, the board of health is recommending and what your thoughts are, and then the board can have a discussion about where we are with COVID because this is, uh, it's getting more troubling every day.
Okay. Am I on?
Yeah.
Okay, um, right now, Maynard is, has a very high vaccination rate. Um, we're up as high with the seniors and adults at ninety-five percent. The children twelve and up is over eighty percent. Um, I don't know that we could actually mandate it or, um, enforce it at this point.
But that's.
The governor does not have a mask mandate and today he said he would not put one in. Um, I think, I think it would be a matter of individual businesses if they wanted to do it. Um, I think it's, you know, people should mask up, especially if they're not vaccinated, if they have somebody in their home that's compromised, children. Um, I know, I believe the schools will be doing up to sixth grade from what I understand by the state, but that I'm not positive on. Um, so I think the problem would be just enforcing it with, with her private business to do that. I don't know if anybody else on the board feels that. Um, Kelly, does, is Hudson putting in a mandate?
No. Hi, good evening. I'm sorry, everyone. My name is Kelly. I'm with the town of Hudson, um, but I am the interim health agent for the town of Maynard, Maynard, so I'm happy to be here with you all tonight. Welcome. Thank you. So the town of Hudson is not putting in a mask mandate. Um, what Kathy just said about enforcement is really difficult, um, especially when it comes on a town, townwide basis opposed to a statewide, um, mandate. So having businesses put in their own mandates is fine and they can, they're more than willing to do that. They're more than capable of doing that. They can absolutely do that. That is their right. Um, so the town of Hudson is not right now, but the town of Hudson, um, school year, everybody is going to be wearing masks um, in the schools and that was a decision made, uh, between me and the superintendent.
Uh, board members, any questions? Comments, concerns?
Oh, it's good to hear that we're ninety-five percent vaccinated. That's a, that's great news.
We have a very high vaccination rate and that's really good, you know, for most towns. And the other towns around us aren't doing a mask mandate either, from what I've read and looked up. So, um, and I don't think the police can enforce it.
I, I agree that the enforcement is, the enforcement is the problem, you know, you put, uh, you know, if the, has the board of health made any type of an official recommendation for the town?
We did, um, when we started coming out of COVID that, you know, we recommend that people wear a mask, but, um, it's a, it would have to be a personal choice, you know, like the signs that were put up. You know, um, especially if you're unvaccinated to put a mask on um, for the town. So, um, but we haven't done anything since that.
How does the board of health reconcile the, the governor's, um, lack of decision to put a mask mandate in versus the CDC guidance that even vaccinated individuals wear a mask indoors?
I don't think it's a lack of. Um, I know Governor Lamont in Connecticut also was not putting in a mask mandate, um, in the state of Connecticut. And he was leaving it up to individual towns to make the decision. So I don't think it's indecision. Um, I, I don't, I think the CDC, not that they don't have a good point, but I think some of the facts might be lost. Vaccinated people may be getting COVID, but the people that are getting hospitalized and having severe cases of it are people that are unvaccinated and that's the fact. Um, so that's, that's why we, we really are not feeling strongly that we should be, you know, vaccinated people did their civic duty and they got vaccinated and the people that choose not to have their reasons and they're willing to accept that risk of severe hospitalization um, on their own because they, it's willingly available and there's two different, you know, vaccines. If they're not comfortable with the mRNA, there's the J and J vaccine, which is a traditional vaccine platform. So the people that are unvaccinated are choosing not only to not get the mRNA, but they're also choosing not to get a vaccine that's been, you know, used for other diseases and has been proven effectiveness. So they're willing to accept that risk. Um, you know, we don't want to lose people that are vaccinated either, like to be on our side. I don't want to see people not go out and get down the road, say, don't get a mandatory, say, like, if we have a mandatory mask mandate, maybe people won't bother to get a booster when it's necessary because they're going to say, gee, I have to wear a mask indoors anyway. I, I just think there's a lot of reasons that it's, you know, aside from the fact that no towns around us have any indoor mask mandates at this point, I, I just don't see, I think it's a, it would be a, a lose-lose for Maynard. And I don't see that it would, putting in a mandatory mask mandate, you know, townwide in every single business would be effective from a health perspective.
So I, I think my main concern right now is we have a large unvaccinated population in children old and under who do not have the option to and to our best knowledge, won't be able to get it for another few months. And we are seeing cases rise, including hospitalization where the Delta variant seems more damaging to children than the original strain. Still not as, you know, uh, damaging as adults, but to ensure a successful opening or school year where the school committee can be fully in person, which is critical, as we've heard from the school committee multiple times, then minimizing even the spread of the Delta variant among adults is very important to get those numbers down. Um, and since we do see some spread even among vaccinated adults, not as much as unvaccinated, it's clear. Um, and I'm wondering, are there things short of a full mask mandate that we can do? Um, and then the other point I just want to make is that the select board meets every two to three weeks, depending on how many Tuesdays there are. It'll be three weeks before we meet next. Board of Health meets, um, uh, monthly or as needed, as we're seeing right now. So from the previous surges, that those numbers can rise faster than the cycles on which these two boards meet on. And so what can we do in terms of giving the town administrator, who's really in charge of the day-to-day operations, the power to put in something if, say, the cases continue to rise between now and the time that we would have a chance to discuss it again? Um, I, I would not be surprised if three weeks from now, this surge is already on the down spike. I would not be surprised if three weeks from now, cases have gone up. I think it's unpredictable enough when you think about the combination of Delta versus the vaccines that we just don't have the data to, to be confident in what's going to happen in the next three weeks. So can we delegate any sort of authority as, um, to the town administrator to be able to take actions in between now and when we would next meet? Um, given that we do not know what this pandemic is going to do next over the next few weeks.
I had a quick question about, a quick comment or question. I actually asked, I guess both to that, uh, respond to that, Jeff, is, so, I mean, we do have the ability to call a special meeting. If for some reason we decide that, um, you know, we, we see the numbers daily at this point, I believe, right, Megan? Um, yeah, so we see the numbers daily. If we start seeing a trend where, where this happens, you know, we posted, we can make a decision within seventy-two hours. Um, but the other question I would have with that would be what Delta are you going to, are, are we going to assign, um, the town administrator to, um, to decide this? Because you'd have to give him some kind of criteria of rates reach X or
Right.
or whatever. Are we prepared to decide or is the board of health prepared to decide what that is tonight?
Well, the, the governor, for instance, is, uh, you know, in the initial phases of some of the searches, you know, taking one position and then move to a more restrictive point. So just because he says today he's not putting one in, uh, at some point if numbers rise, he would eventually, um, suggest that or say, suggest that it's up to the town by town rather than not putting a mask mandate in. So if that was the case, that could be one criteria. If we saw, as mentioned, a number of our surrounding towns, I, I don't know how much I buy because I think there's just a lot of pushback based on the fact that we're having kind of COVID whiplash right now, um, that it, it makes it politically unfavorable to put it in. But we're supposed to lead and do what's best from a safety perspective. So I'm not, I'm not convinced that just because no surrounding town is doing it, that it's not the right thing to do. But if we start.
It doesn't mean it's right thing to do either, though. Just because no surrounding town doesn't mean that Maynard necessarily should be doing this. I mean, are we going to put in public gathering limits? Because really the spread of COVID during the pandemic was primarily due to gatherings. Do we want to put in, what, do we want to go another step further and say, okay, no one in Maynard can gather over a certain, because those were the super spreader, you know, situations, these home gatherings, parties, both indoor and outdoor. I mean, that, that, you know, is that, is that what you're looking at too? You're looking at like outdoor, indoor gathering limits? I mean.
At the CDC guidance for masking for, um, indoor, and I believe there could be even in-between where we don't feel a mandate is appropriate. We put out a townwide recommendation, which is something.
We, we do have a recommendation out there. We've always had that, that we recommend people wear masks, but it's an individual uh, decision. Also, if, if the restaurants are open, everything's open to full capacity. Um, when you're in there eating, you're still not wearing a mask. So, you know, you have to weigh that as well.
I agree.
The benefit, we just, at this point, we're just not seeing like the scientific and health benefit, like from doing this without putting in, you know, far wider restrictions.
Yeah, I'm personally comfortable with the decision we made from a town perspective when it comes to town buildings. I, I think that was a good decision to make from that standpoint. And we allow the, the private businesses to, you know, to mandate if they want to. That's up to them to mandate it.
Right, I agree with that. I think that the towns have their choice to mandate it for their own business and they have the right to tell people to leave their business if they're not masked, if they have that.
Yeah, and if you have younger children, like you need to protect them, like you, they should be minimizing time like indoors. I know my sister has a ten-year-old and, you know, she just isn't comfortable eating indoors in a restaurant at this point. And when her son goes inside, you know, he wears the mask and he will get the vaccine when it's available, but she takes the proper precautions for him, knowing that they're, you know, that he is vulnerable and you know, people have to make their individual choices too. If you live with someone that could be immunocompromised, I mean, it's, you know, you need to make those decisions. And if you're unvaccinated, you should be wearing a face covering. Um, you know, we can't really mandate that because we can't ask someone their vaccination status. So people need to be, you know, people need to be mature about it and they need to take it seriously, but I just, like I said, I don't know that one indoor mandatory mask mandate in one town with no other further restrictions, like someone could have a hundred-person party and it could be a Delta variant super spreader of, like, it's just, it's not, you know what I'm saying? It's not compatible.
Well, what if, if town started, if case counts were to continue to rise and neighboring towns were to start to put those in place, where would we fall then?
We would reevaluate. We would call a meeting and reevaluate it, yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, my preference is not to be one of the last towns, but rather be in the earlier wave, uh, to put those in if it becomes necessary. I hope it won't. I, it's very possible it won't. Um, we, we just don't know, but I just, I think we should be proactive rather than reactive in the situation to keep, um, things open as long as possible.
Right, and we can't control what the schools do. If they put in a mandate, that's up to them. We have no control over that. So.
The governor did recommend, like, for K through six, he did recommend masks in schools, but we can't, we can't really comment on that because we're, I mean, we can't make that decision.
Yes, but we interact in the fact that adults, you know, are, are interacting and can spread COVID to their children. So any step we are able to take to prevent admission of the Delta variant helps out the school district, helps them stay in school in person for longer. Um, so I, I make sure we're recognizing that. Kathy, you said that you had put out a recommendation for masking. Do you mean one since the CDC indoor recommended?
Well, we've always recommended that, you know, especially if you're not vaccinated, if you have immunocompromised situations, whether you live with somebody or have one yourself or young children, that it is best to mask up.
Um, you put out a recommendation in accordance to the CDC guidelines, since it's come out post-Delta variant spread, uh, that vaccinated individuals should be masking indoors?
We don't have that.
And wouldn't that be a good intermediate before a mask mandate in town is just a recommendation?
Well, I think people can make their own decision too. I mean, we, everybody knows that.
Maybe people are.
The CDC. The CDC does recommend that. We can put that out that the CDC recommends that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we can't enforce anything. So at this point.
That's fair, but even a voluntary enforcement is an option and, and we can't enforce every single thing all the time, but simply setting up that, putting it out there, you know, kind of sets the tone and the expectation and it shows leadership as opposed to reacting to something that we know spreads faster than we can control.
Well, don't forget, no vaccine, but Jeff is a hundred percent. I mean, people are using these breakthrough case terms. I mean, the vaccine was designed not to completely, we knew it wasn't going to completely eradicate COVID. I mean, people, vaccinated people are testing positive, but, you know, the majority of them are completely like either asymptomatic or cases of a mild cold. Like the vaccine is doing its job. So just, you just have to keep that in mind. I think the media tends to scare people with the Delta variant because it is contagious and it does spread and people are testing positive, but if people are testing positive and they have like, you know, symptoms that you've probably had a flu or a sinus infection, that's worse. I mean, to me, the vaccines are working, so I just think people need to keep that in mind as well. Um, and not kind of fall prey to sort of the scare tactics that the media can put forth. I think a lot of people get confused by that and I just want to remind people of that.
I agree with you, Lisa. I think sometimes it's, it's more made out of it than what it is. And I agree with Jeff too at the same time, but I think there's enough information out there for people to be able to make a, you know, a decision. That's what's right for them. Um, and I think for us to put a mandate in place at this point in time, I'm not in favor of that. Um, that's just me personally. I don't know what everybody else thinks. But I, I think we've done a good job, again, of mandating in buildings that are owned by the town. Um, and I think on the private side, uh, you got to be careful because I think if a private business. And I think on the private side, you've got to be careful because I think if a private business, some of them are doing it, some of them are not. But I think you also have to be careful. You don't want to kill the businesses again. I mean, we just came out of, you know, a situation where you almost lost businesses and you don't want to put a mandate in place, unnecessary mandate. And then create
Nothing that would have a benefit. Like if it's not going to have a significant impact or benefit, that is my thing. It's like, don't impose something that really, in the larger scheme of things, is really not going to have a significant health impact. That's how like I feel and how I think the rest of the board feels.
My thoughts, first off, I think that some of the, we had one business in town that just announced that they were going to have a mandatory mask mandate for attendance at their, actually, they even went further. I think they said that it was going to be mandatory that you show vaccination status and/or positive, I mean, a negative test for COVID before you're allowed into their venue. And the reaction that I've seen is quite positive for Maynard residents. In fact, people say they're more likely to go, knowing that that is the status. I don't, I don't believe it's possible for, you know, a town to put a mandate on because of the enforcement issue. I do think that, you know, I personally strongly
Are you just unclear on what you said?
Yeah, I don't think it's possible in the town to have a mask mandate because it's virtually impossible to monitor, to enforce. So it becomes more or less just, hey, you know, we have a mask mandate, you should do this. But there's no enforcement. When it's at the state level, you have a lot more backing for the enforcement aspect, the et cetera. I just think at a town level, it's difficult. I do think, however, to Jeff's point earlier, relative to the swift response, should tomorrow the governor change, you know, and I've been consistent with this throughout the pandemic, where I believe we should follow the guidance of the state medical staff, you know, medical people and the countrywide medical people. And especially when they're on the same page, often, you know, lately, they're not. But when they're on the same page, I think we should react accordingly. So should there be a mandate or a comment from the governor that suggests that the state is now suggesting strongly, you know, that type of language, that we move forward with some type of action? I think we should be able to move quickly in order to do so. Because then I think we'd have more of an opportunity to, you know, to enforce it. Personally, I strongly encourage people to wear a mask indoors. And I am ninety-eight percent of the time doing that when I go to the supermarket and everything else. Today, I went out for a walk and I walked into the supermarket and I said, oh, I forgot. Because I'm not carrying one in my pocket like I did back, you know, six months ago. So anyway, yeah, I think the mandate from the town level becomes difficult. I do think, and I would like to see a recommendation from the Board of Health, if we can get one, that just says, we strongly urge, you know, follow CDC guidelines or something along those lines. But that's up to the Board of Health. And, but that would be, you know, that's where I sort of feel. But, and I encourage, I have privately encouraged, as a citizen, encouraged the school committee, certain members I've asked to support mandated masks in the schools for all school, for all levels of school. Because I think that that's, that's just the right thing to do to prevent spread. But, go ahead, Justine.
I just had two questions. And the first is, and I realize that Maynard is a small town and we're not an island and people can come in. But I'm just curious if, what the criteria, I know the CDC guideline was for significant spread, right? And Middlesex County counts as, you know, has met that criteria. But what criteria has Maynard met as far as that? Has Maynard met the criteria of significant spread? Is that a?
From my knowledge, right, Kathy?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
I don't remember the numbers.
The last number I saw was seven active cases in town. But I know that it's not just active cases that generates the triggering of the level. It's positivity rate or something along those lines over the course of seven days or whatever it was, you know. So it's six months ago, but it seems like an eternity ago when we knew all the rules.
Yeah, you know, a lot of information, like, I mean, they're still trying to figure a lot of this out. I mean, the CDC, yeah, they do have these recommendations, but, you know, I've seen doctors from Johns Hopkins say that, you know, vaccinated individuals cannot, that they're not the ones that are, you know, passing the virus on. But, you know, is that really true? I think they're still trying to figure that out. You know, the, 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 you know, the anti-vax conspiracy people are saying it's the vaccinated people that are spreading it to all the unvaccinated people. I mean, you know, there's so much information that's flowing out there and I don't feel like it ever really gets fully clarified by any organization, unfortunately. So, but I think a lot of it is, it's just, it's still being researched and it's still being determined, like, how is the spreading? And, you know, at one point, they said, if you have a vaccine, you don't have enough, you know, you don't have, the vaccine can't, you can't shed the virus. But I don't know if that's true because we do see a spread with the Delta variant. So, you know, again, I think we just need to kind of take it. I don't think we want to do a knee-jerk reaction. I think we just kind of need to take it slowly as more and more information and the science continues to surface on this. I think that's how we kind of have to unfortunately get our decision-making, because I don't think anybody has all the answers right now.
If you wait for all the answers, you'll never do anything and you'll simply allow surges to rise. So I think all what you just said in terms of, we're not certain about how the Delta variant interacts. And I believe the specific recommendation you had about the spread was pre-Delta. So that's clearly not the case we're talking about right now. Says that putting in very moderate, very minor, and we're talking about indoor masks only, regulations would help prevent the spread and a more conservative approach would be favored when you don't have all the information, you know, you're not going to get it. So I disagree that that lack of specific knowledge about spread in the Delta rate for vaccinated individuals suggests that we shouldn't do anything. I just
Well, no, but I think that what proves that, like, it's the hospitalizations. Out of a hundred and sixty-one, you know, million vaccinated adults, there have been fifty-nine hundred, like, serious hospitalizations in the country. That's like point zero 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 four percent. So, you know, we're more talking people who are really, really significantly ill and were probably going to die of something else anyway, and then COVID, that they contracted COVID. So I'm just saying, the science doesn't exactly support that vaccinated people are getting severe cases of COVID. So therefore, if ninety percent of Maynard adults are vaccinated, I don't see why we would implement a mandatory mask mandate and not leave it up to individual businesses.
Because one hundred percent children under twelve are unvaccinated and they can get it. And even if the adults aren't getting hospitalized, they can still spread to children. So I think there is a reason to put in, again, very mild
We don't know, we don't know that, but, yeah.
But there is a mask for children. The CDC and everybody knows that children should be masked under the age of twelve.
I agree.
And we've always recommended that. The Board of Health has always recommended that. It's on our site. So.
Yeah, or if you're unvaccinated, you should be wearing a mask. Or if you're immunocompromised, like you, there are people that should still be wearing masks and they, you know, parents need, you know, they, like I said, my sister knows her son can't get a vaccine and he wears the mask in public and when he's indoors, and that's kind of how it has to be. But I, I know people have different opinions on that, but.
Right.
Jeff, Jeff, go ahead. Make your final comment. I don't think we're going to get anywhere as a, as a board towards, at least my sense is, if the board, if board members feel differently, that we're, that we're going to have a majority that's going to be in favor of moving to, to put in a mask mandate. There was a proposed motion this evening on the agenda, on the agenda to possibly give the town administrator authority in accordance with agreements with the CDC guidelines and the Board of Health to put in emergency provisions, should they be necessary. I don't even know if we're there, but go ahead and make your final comment. And then I also want to say, if there's anybody from the public that has a quick comment to make, I would welcome that too. Because I think the public should have an opportunity.
I'll say that I, you know, I, first of all, I disagree that just because we don't have strong enforcement tools doesn't mean that it's not worth putting in either a recommendation or a mandate because voluntary compliance will go up, it'll give business owners an easier time to implement such policies in their own shop. So I disagree with that. I think anything we can do to prevent spread among adults, and we know the Delta variant does spread among adults and can therefore be passed to children, will help us have a successful school year in person. I do think if we do, and I was not planning to come and recommend a mask mandate today. My plan was to ask, what are the conditions and how will we make sure that we can put in further guidance in a time-effective manner, given the timing of our board? I do think that the messaging needs to come out, that if we do anything like that, it's connected to the current case count. So when case counts come back down, those go away. And so you'd be clear about that. But apparently, we're not willing to be proactive, you know, as a board right now.
Jeff, we do have, this Board of Health has a recommendation out there to wear masks. We've always had that, that it is in the best interest of people to wear masks.
One at a time, please, so.
The recommendation, as we discussed, is not aligned with the CDC guidance and has not been updated with the information that's come out since the variant. Would you agree with that statement? Okay.
That wasn't, that's not my dog.
I don't, I don't appreciate the tone that the Board of Health has set here. Instead of saying, you know, we don't feel comfortable putting in a mask mandate or further regulations or recommendations now. But if it gets worse, then we will have to think about it. You've been simply fighting me the whole way.
No, I said we would meet with Greg. If the numbers correlate that we have to have an emergency meeting, we would meet with Greg.
That, that's fair. You did say that, but that certainly hasn't been the tone or tone of the entire conversation. It's been highly resistant to even suggesting any further regulation. But I think I'll leave it there, David. Thank you.
Okay.
Just to clarify though, David, we were talking about what he's talked, we were talking about whether tonight that the Board of Health recommends a mandatory immediate indoor mask mandate. And we were just saying, no, we do not. We didn't say that we wouldn't be proactive. You know, I just think it's some of what Mr. Swanberg said was misstated. So I just wanted to go on the record by saying that.
Okay, does any, does any member of the public that's listening in have any comments to make on this topic?
I have a comment, David.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Let me get to it. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's all about, it's all about people's health and safety. I think in earlier, I think Armin said it, and I'm a businessman, I own several businesses. I manage several, some have been negatively affected by the pandemic. And I, I think the last consideration, when we're gonna, when we get to a point, if we get to a point where we have to consider masks, should be the business's financial viability because that's not what it's all about. It's all about health and safety. If we, if we start to weigh how much, how the businesses are going to do and how they're going to fare economically, we're way off the base. I mean, it's all about health and safety. It's nothing to do with economics. If economics plays a part in our decisions, we are, we don't deserve to be sitting on this, on this phone call. It's just crazy to think that economics has any part in this decision. It's all about health and safety and, you know, wearing a mask for health and safety, to David's point. I'm still carrying one in my pocket. I put it back in after a little while. It wasn't in there for a while, but now everywhere I go, I have it. If I'm in a situation that worries me, I put it on, you know, if I'm going somewhere with my daughter or my granddaughter, I put it on. But I would never consider whether a store, a business, a bank, or anyone else was going to succeed financially based on whether I had a mask on or not. It's my only comments.
And again, I'll ask any members of the public who are listening in, any questions or comments?
I was just, sorry, I would just like to make one comment. So the CDC has already put out the advisory. So it's not that the board needs to put in any additional advisories in because the advisory is already set by the CDC. So all it is really is just letting the public know of the CDC advisory, which I think that they've already done and continue to do for Town Hall. So it's not putting on an additional advisory, it's just letting people know that the advisory is already out there and that people should be following the advisory that the CDC has already put forward. So I think the advisory, the idea of the advisory is already out there. It doesn't necessarily need to be put out there again, but maybe publicized a little bit more. So maybe we can put some more signs up, et cetera, et cetera. But the advisory is already there. So it's already there, set in stone on the CDC's website. And so I just wanted to make that one comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I don't think we're going to have any motions made. I think we're going to ask the Board of Health, continue to monitor the situation and keep in touch with Town Hall staff. And, you know, I'm sure Greg and Megan will keep us informed. And if we, to Justine's comment earlier, if we have a need for an emergency call, we will do just that and act as quickly as we possibly can at that point.
Mr. Chair, this is Natasha. Is it, can I, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Thank you. So Kelly, thank you for what you were just mentioning, just to add to what Jeff also mentioned early about the recommendations and whether updated advisory would be put out. I think, going back to what Lisa mentioned earlier, people are unsure about what advisory to follow. And I think people look to the Maynard Board of Health with reassurance, yes, we are in agreement with X, Y, and Z advisory in that sense. And I think that is potentially what might need to be clarified a little bit more, that we are still in agreement with the CDC guidance, because it has evolved in the past year. And because there are so many different conflicting publications and to kind of remove that from the midst of confusion, that would be something I would wonder if the Board of Health would be considering. Not that necessarily, but yes, reaffirming, yes, we are still in agreement with the updated advisory to follow.
Yes.
And is that something that would be able to be
We can put that on the website.
Okay.
And we've always been in agreement, we've always been in agreement with the CDC and with the wearing of masks. And so, but to put a new mandate in is not workable at this time.
And I'm totally not speaking about a mandate, just to re-clarify that with the new updated advisory, we still are, we still are in agreement that that is the best approach for Maynard, or not.
Yes, we will update that.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the board before we move on to the other topic that we want to have a discussion with the, with the Board of Health on tonight? Nothing? Okay. Thank you for your comments, members of the board. That was helpful and, you know, lively debate and discussion. And, you know, I'm glad we had it and people could hear people's opinion. Megan, can you summarize what the request is on the, for the potential health agent and the staff support position that is being suggested under item seven B?
I'm sure, I'm happy to. We also have Kathy here, you know, from the Board of Health to kind of summarize the memo in the board docs packet. So I'll defer to her to start, and then I'm happy to kind of follow up with any questions from a management point of view.
Yep.
Okay.
Kathy?
As was submitted in the memo to the select board, the Board of Health is supporting a creation of a full-time health agent position. We would also like the creation of a part-time assistant for the Office of Municipal Services. As right now, we only have one assistant in there. The positions right now are necessary to compensate for the increased workload and to meet the demand, especially during this pandemic. The position would guide us hopefully to emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic and help the community take a proactive approach. The department assistant would support the health agent and provide general administrative support to the Office of Municipal Services. As we all know, Kelly Polichuk was our eight-hour-a-week health agent. And over the past few years, there's been significant increase in public health work in Maynard and the state of Massachusetts. From the 2019 triple E, COVID-19, we had H1N1, multiple flus and vaccination efforts, mental health issues and numerous housing concerns. Our staffing level is not Our staffing level is not preferable to handling a public health crisis. And while the health agent took the critical COVID-19 calls and concerns, the OMS Department Assistant and Assistant Town Administrator took on other health-related tasks, including the railroad street litigation, noise complaints, dumpster complaints, application administration of grants, public health education, participation in development of regional collaborations, drafting of all correspondence, concluding order letters, supporting us for vaccination efforts, Board of Health filing, and this has all been left on Megan and Janelle. In keeping up with proactive, especially with boosters, we're going to need somebody, a dedicated health agent and assistant could take on these tasks and allow the town staff to focus on their primary duties. The background, twenty, in 2009, Kevin Sweet was the Director of Public Health, Executive Director of Municipal Services, and Assistant Town Administrator. At the time, we also had a part-time assistant to support him. The Office of Municipal Services has reduced administrative staff twice in recent years, once when the town shifted to online permitting, and once from a budget cut which eliminated a part-time administrative position. So we really would like support in getting a full-time health agent position and hopefully a part-time assistant to that position. That's.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I don't really have a question. I just want to, well, actually, I'd love to hear a little bit, because Kelly, Kelly Callow has been covering for, for us for a couple of months, and she's also done that before. And I would, if you feel comfortable, Kelly, I'd actually really like to hear your thoughts as far as like, you know, the workload in general, you know? And I think that that is, it is very important to also point out the background here is that we did have a full-time health agent. You know, probably, I don't know, would we say, seven or eight years ago? We've tried it. We tried it this way, and unfortunately, I don't necessarily think it's doing the work it needs to be done. I've worked in a Board of Health office, and, you know, even in a smaller town, it's, you know, there's a full-time, there's a full-time office administrator because you need someone there to handle all of this. So Kelly, I'm sorry, do you have any, any thoughts?
Yeah, of course, I would love to share. So I am covering, as Justine had just said, I had covered the last, the last time I had covered, we actually went through the Green Meadow School fiasco. I don't know if fiasco is the right word, but we went through that. That consumed a lot of time. At the time, I had been contracted for six hours a week. It was probably putting in about 15 hours just from that one specific item. But I was also doing other items, but I would say I spent about 15 hours a week on that. Currently, we're dealing with a lot of housing cases. You, you and the town of Maynard have way more housing cases than the town of Hudson Hads. And I have a full-time sanitarium that works under me. We've had three hoarding cases, which are extremely time-consuming for the town of Maynard, since we've started back in the middle of June, I'm sorry, in the middle of July. And I would say that we're putting in over the amount of time that we have also been contracted for this time. I think there's a lot more that we could be doing, but we just, there's just not enough time in the week for us to do. There's a lot of services that could be offered by a full-time health agent that just aren't gonna be offered by a part-time person, an eight-hour-a-week person especially. There are so many services and so many grant opportunities that a full-time health agent could get involved in. And unfortunately, since you don't have a full-time health agent, you're not, Maynard is not getting that expertise. They're not getting that component, component of public health that they, I think, really need. I think the town of Maynard has been underserved in their public health services for quite some time now.
Thank you.
The, any other questions or comments from the board? A question from me. The proposal, as I understand it, is at least for, for at least one year, that, that would be funded through ARPA funds. Is that accurate?
So I can speak to that a little bit, David. The, so while this request from the Board of Health is for a full-time health agent and a part-time department assistant, the funds and the budget recommendation are really just to support the full-time health agent. It would not be to also fund a part-time department assistant. And that's because the, yes, the ARPA funds are available for COVID-related expenses specifically. So while we can make the case that this full-time health agent will be doing a significant amount of work regarding COVID, you know, from mental health, you know, it just, it's, it covers a lot. It's not gonna be everything because there's still gonna be housing inspections. There's still gonna be, you know, mold and, you know, all sorts of other things. So we're looking at it from about 60% COVID, 40% everything else right now. And if you can see in board docs, Greg put in the general fund budget revision development document. And also, under the draft articles, the budget recommendation is to use some of the new growth funds to support the municipal contribution to this full-time position. And the rest of the funds for the position and benefits would be able to come from ARPA. So that, that's the, oh, I think it's important to, you know, I think the board wanted to make sure we're kind of sharing the need in the office because there is quite a need for both administrative support and, and health, specifically health expertise. But at this time, the funding, a funding model would allow for a full-time health agent and not the additional administrative support.
And that, and that's what leads to my second question. And, you know, I fully accept the, the issues that Kelly has explained and described. My concern is budgetary moving forward, not for this year, because essentially, we take half of the money that we're already spending. It's built into our budget as it is essentially, and then we take the rest from ARPA, and it's not impactful on our budget. We move to next year, if we have a full-time, or, you know, next fiscal year, if we have a full-time position, then we have to fund it. And that's when the decisions are made. So this, this discussion is not just about a, an ARPA decision, but rather a long-term discussion relative to the budgetary impact. Now, clearly, we could, we could certainly, as a board, have a discussion about, okay, let's move forward with the understanding that ARPA funds are used and we'll revisit. We'd never be able to hire anybody under those circumstances because someone's being hired, they virtually, without knowledge of if they have a long-term position. So I guess it's really a bigger discussion from my, from my perspective as looking at it from a long-term, not getting hit with these budget hits two years down the road and saying, oh, God, we weren't prepared for this.
Excuse me, David.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that, you know, I, I think that if, starting now, we, we would have to build it into the budget. But at the same time, I also think we, we kind of need to look at, and I'm sure, and as I know you do, we look at Maynard as a small city, right? And so we're unique in so many different ways. And one of the things that we're unique in is our needs. And so we have tried really hard to, and, and we have worked really hard to keep our FTEs at the bare minimum. And, you know, and we did for a little while, you know, Kevin, when Kevin was working as town administrator, he was able to fill some of that gap. And to my understanding now from reading the memo and, and, you know, having some conversations, you know, so right now Megan and Janelle are filling that gap, which is okay. But at the same time, that means that they're not working on economic development. They're not working on the parking authority. They're not working on anything else that we actually really need. So I'm, I'm wondering if this would more be an investment to allow us to grow more as a town because then they could do what they need to do in order to bring our town up more.
And that's the point I was getting at, is, you know, the longer, the longer-term discussion. I'm not suggesting that it's a bad, that's the wrong decision or the right decision. It's just that the discussion goes beyond just the issue of using ARPA funds to, to fund a position. We're talking about long-term planning, budgetary planning going forward, that sometimes gets lost in these discussions where we say, you know, okay, yep, we'll do that. And then, you know, next, in, whenever it is, in the February meeting, we're sitting there saying, oh, we have to fund this position that we have previously said we'll fund with ARPA funds. Now it's gotta be funded normally. What are we gonna do? And then panic sets in. So rather than have panic set in, I'd like to, you know, know that this is where, this is the road we're going down and that the board's comfortable with that.
Megan? Do you know if there have been discussions along the lines of what David is speaking about for this position?
Yes, yeah, there, there has been. I mean, so we can use ARPA for the next couple of years. And we're also looking to use new growth for this. So, you know, the, the intent would be that this position would be, would be part of our budget going forward.
I, I think to Justine's point earlier, this is an investment we're making. And I, I think it's important that we look at this long-term. To your point, David, I mean, yes, we, short-term, ARPA is gonna fund this position. But I think we definitely need to look at how do we incorporate this in our budget going forward, because I think it is an investment in our town. I think it's important to have that position made for our town.
Jeff, any thoughts?
I agree with what Justine, Kathy, and Kelly have said. I think the value proposition is, is clear to me.
Okay. Having all of that, any further discussion? Does anybody have any motion to make?
Well, Mr. Chair, so I guess I would recommend that the motion is drafted, be amended, just because there isn't a funding mechanism for the, as much as I'd like to have one today, and I might come back and ask for something in the future. But, you know, to be realistic, there is not a funding mechanism in place to, to hire a part-time department assistant in the office of municipal services right now.
Oh, yeah, the, the motion doesn't have to be as it's been presented to us. That's why we have this discussion beforehand.
So, so how do you change the motion that we're reading on the, on the agenda? How would you like it read? Leave out the assistant piece?
Yes.
All right. So I'll try this, and you tell me if it works. Move to approve the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the creation of a full-time health agent and all costs related thereto.
Second.
That's exactly what she was referencing. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. All those in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Armand?
Absolutely, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Okay. And so there will be an article at town meeting to fund at least part of that presumably. And we'll talk about that later on in, in this meeting. And then, then we'll have, during budgetary discussions, we'll have the discussion about the future. Okay. Item eight, and I see.
Did I have to close there?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I want to help Kathy, Kathy, you are, yeah.
I was, I, sorry, I was muted. A motion to end the Board of Health portion of the joint meeting. Second.
I second that. This is Lisa.
In favor, Lisa?
Aye.
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, and thank you, Kelly, as well.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to pop off. I had a meeting before this, so I'm kind of tired, but have a good night, and it was so nice to meet you all.
Thank you, you too. All right. Item eight is the marijuana establishment's topics. First, and I see that our marijuana expert, Kate Metteroff, has joined us. This evening, Town Council, good to see you, Kate. It's been a while. Okay, I was gonna tell you to unmute yourself.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me.
You're always welcome. You all recall at our last meeting, we approved the, the whole issue with Green Star that I won't go, go into. But tonight, we are here to update the license for Green Star Herbal Retail Cannabis. Kate, I will turn it over to you to, to give us sort of the background information.
Sure. So there was a corp, a change to their corporate structure. And it's my understanding that at the last meeting, you, you did approve a change to allow the HCA to be transferred. So now we've got a couple of layers of permitting in Maynard. And the second piece is the licensure. So the question becomes, will you allow the transfer from Dreams, Dreams, that, Green Star to, um, and, and, and go from there. Really, it, this is more of a procedural thing in my mind because you already had the discussion about whether or not there would, they would make a good partner and the discussion about whom you originally contracted with was had last week. So this is really a formality. And for the public, anyone who's interested in, the licensure piece is really critical to Maynard because it's an annual renewal process similar to your liquor license and licenses in town. So, so this allows us to keep track of what's going on, gives us a mechanism to bring folks in if something's, you know, gone awry. But it's my understanding that this is a sort of bigger corporation, a bigger outfit with, with a lot of experience. So we don't anticipate the need to have to do that. And tonight, the question is, will you allow the transfer?
Thank you. Yeah, that's sort of my understanding of what we were going to be doing, very, very routine. By the way, I'm, I'm looking at Tom Morey, and he looks like he's from, he looks like he's from like the, the Queen album.
Absolutely, yeah, yes.
With just the faces, but anyway.
I need that filter for myself. It's very cool.
Sitting in a dark room, apparently. I don't know. Anyway, now that, that's where my eyes went. I saw the black screen, but there was a face there. So, anyway. So, yeah, there's, Kate, from your perspective in guiding us, there's really no change at all from your perspective relative to what, what we have, what we need, what we're going forward with. So it's really just similar to nothing else other than officially transferring ownership over to a new group.
Yeah, and remember, they're already licensed through the CCC, so this process has to be vetted via the CCC as well. And they do all, you know, very thorough background checks of all the principles to, to ensure it's something that's, that's worthwhile for the state of Massachusetts as well. So, so I view this as just procedural tonight.
Okay. Any questions from the board? And if not, I will entertain a motion.
So I could move to approve the updated retail cannabis license for Green Star Herbal. Contingents upon approval from the Cannabis Control Commission. Authorized use of digital signature approved.
Take a second. Go ahead, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none? A roll call vote. All those in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Very good. Thank you, and congratulations to, to the team. And thanks, Kate, for all your work and making sure it went smoothly.
Thanks again, everybody. Great to see everybody.
Good, Tom.
Good, too. And let us know where you got that black.
Album, I want the album coming.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
The next item under the marijuana discussions is the proposed marijuana delivery operator at 2 to 6 Powder Mill Road. And I know that there are some issues that we want to discuss on this, and I will turn it to, I don't know if, if, Megan, if you have anything to say first, and then we'll have Kate make any comments that she wants to make. And then if there are any comments from, you know, I know the EDC commented. I think we all saw their, their responses, but it says, any comments from the public and any comments from the, from the applicant, if you want to call it that, as to what their proposal are, we'll go from there. So, Megan?
Sure, thank you, David. So we do have Adam Stack here today, who is looking to have a delivery operator. Sure, thank you, David. So we do have Adam Stack here today, who is looking to have a delivery operator. License for cannabis delivery at two dash six Powder Mill Road. This is a, not a retail operation, it is a direct delivery to consumer. Business model, and we had them. Fill out our host community agreement application that this board approved, I think in December, to help us learn a little bit more about the. Businesses that are looking to come to town and, you know, what their, what their plans are, what their models are, you know, the research has done in town, et cetera. There might be a little confusion in the documents, because originally they were called Mint Delivery, but now the company has been updated to be. Oopa Inc. So there, if there's a conflicting name, that is why when they originally applied to us, it was, is Mint Delivery. So our process right now is to have the, you know, have the applicant fill out this host community agreement application. Submitted to me, I look through it to make sure that everything is included. And then we're using the Economic Development Committee, which is the advisory. Through the town administrator to help kind of see the proposals and. You know, assist in the review. So they, this, this. Proposal was presented to the Economic Development Committee. They discussed it over the course of a few meetings, the, the. Summary of the recommendation is in the packet. Also, the chair, Roz, is here, so she can speak to that if there's questions later. But I think, I think it probably makes sense if, if it's okay with the chair for the, or, or of course, however you want to do the order, but I believe there is a presentation here from the applicant that. Summarized that.
We want the applicant to speak first, and then if Kate has any comments to add, certainly. And then, then we'll hear from the board and any comments, including from the EDC.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Attorney Nicholas Gomes, representing the applicant.
Welcome, Mr. Gomes. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the board. I want to thank you very much for your time today. I am here with my colleague and partner, Sean Coleman. We have offices in New Bedford, down on the south coast of Massachusetts, Fall River in Boston. We are a cannabis-specific law firm, and we are representing. The clients, Dr. Uma Darnablon, Adam Stack, Pedro Santana, and Anderson Wink. Thank you very much, Mr. Matuto, for that brief explanation. My clients did submit the host community agreement application. On their own, and I commend them for doing so. My partner and I were just recently retained, and we already started the process of the pre-certification at the state level. This is determined essentially by Dr. Uma Darnablon's social equity status, which allows the company to. Make deliveries to individuals at their house over the next three years under an exclusive period. We intend to bring a delivery operation to the town of Maynard at the proposed two to six Powder Mill Road. And bring all of that benefit back to you. I'm going to briefly go over. The company and what we are proposing, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I do want you to know. Once the Control Commission essentially gets the approval, I would be supplementing additional information. And this would be under the name of the new entity, Oopa Inc. So here, this is the delivery operator license, which allows the wholesale purchase of products. These are prepackaged material. And then they are then delivered to the consumer at their home. A big misconception about the delivery industry is this is not a pizza delivery type model. We are not getting calls and then sending a vehicle out the door for every phone call. Rather, I find it closer similar to that of a laundromat that collects the laundry. And then, once it's cleaned, it all goes out. So here, we are going to have rotations of vehicles loading up, going out for an extended period of time. Making deliveries and then coming back. Here, the vehicles themselves are specifically designed to be safe. For the specific use. The vehicles are not marked, they're plain and randomized. We don't want a fleet of vehicles that is easily recognizable. This is not a taxi service, for example, with a brightly colored green vehicle going down the road. We want to be discreet. Our clients want us to be discreet. And this is why the entire process is tracked from the central home base of Two Powder Mill. But these vehicles attract every step of the way from their initial loading up to every single delivery, every single stop along the way. Anytime a transaction does occur, although the, the priority is having cashless. Transactions ahead of time. But in the event there is cash, both the product and the cash is stored in two different separate lock containers. Of course, the vehicle will have GPS delivery for delivery capacity and tracking. But more importantly, the constant communication where there's a set of eyes on all the vehicles that are moving throughout Commonwealth. This is an example of the placement of the secure locations for storage. And again, it's going to be separated for cash, also. The product itself. The vehicles are limited to $10,000 worth of value at any given time. That is a substantial amount, and it's not a nice, based on the numbers that I run, I see it much less actually being on a single. Delivery based on limitations of the size of the product. This is just a larger view to show you. This is a rear model. They do make front-facing and others. The intent, as I mentioned, with the strategic choice of Maynard, is central located to a, a great area. And the accessibility to large, major metro, metropolitan areas. While at the same time focusing on the suburbs and the closer towns surrounding Maynard and Maynard itself. The location here, which is at the entrance to the downtown area, right now site control is secured with the owner. We are seeking a host community agreement. In the Cannabis Control Commission, pre-certification is pending at this time. The host community agreement, of course, would be required for us to proceed further. This slide here shows the specific site. I would draw your attention to Wall Fam Street, heading to the downtown area. As well as the Powder Mill Road, where the main interest, entrance and activity will take place. The yellow outline is the actual property line. For all of the parcels together, there's, there's a few different parcels. The first one being the parking lot. The second being the, what is known as the window and mirror building. As well as the building on Wall Fam Street, which is to Wall Fam Street. Here, the main activity on site will be the vehicles entering and exiting on this safe, secure parking area. Entering the facility for safe loading one by one. And exiting the premises and going to their destination. This view is of the powder mill view from the street. Right across the street is the BP Gas in Jiffy Loop. As you can see, this has historically been a bustling commercial and retail mixed use. This side of the building that we plan on using for the cannabis fits within that existing commercial grit of this particular zone. And then, I'm sorry, this particular property historically. Moving forward, I'd like to show you. The other side on Wall Fam Street. So here, the Wall Fam Street property, which is going to be under common ownership, is this building right here, the white building. This is what you see coming over the river and crossing the bridge. Our intent in bringing the cannabis op, going to be under comment. The intent in bringing the cannabis operation to the commercial side of the property. The intent is to allow creative use of this property. I, I noticed in the Economic Development Committee's notes that they mentioned having a. Enhanced cohesion to the downtown area to comply with the master plan. At this time, and what I'm proposing to you is, with the refinement of council, taking the applicant from. The early stages of submitting an initial host community agreement application. Through the Cannabis Control Commission, architectural review, having their policies and procedures specifically designed to the regulation as well as the properties. We are going to be able to have those meaningful updates that this property requires, as it's been. Neglected and used to its former extent. The entire way. And without a creative reuse of this property, we, there's, there should be concerns of what is ultimately going to happen. Looking at this specific intersection. It, it, I can see where the economic development wanted that pedestrian pathway, but this property naturally. Fits that designation, because the Wall Fam Street side, which we could have some leeway with figuring out which tenants are going to go in there, that's the pedestrian-facing street. While at the same time, this property allows for the business end of the property in the back. Where we'll have low impact to this butters, the neighbors, Jiffy Loop and the gas station, which is busy. Here, our vehicles are going to be on the road, going to other municipalities in other roads. Burdening their roads, while at the same time, we're bringing monies back to this local economy. So we do have that intent of preserving this property to its best. Now, looking at this intersection specifically. Eight Parker Street, across the street, is a large residential complex. It is substantially unlikely that a large complex for residential only could be used at this property. Because of its size limitations, the sensitive environmental impact in the rear with the river. And what we are proposing is. What would be a new lift to this property in both the form of exterior renovation. Updating, so it is attractive aesthetically pleasing, especially on the Wall Fam Street side. While allowing the shielded business part continue in its former. Method of commercial use. Now, specifics for the company, in my client's filings. Touch upon the, all the important parts, but I want to just go over a few of the highlights. The products that we're selling have already been tested according to Massachusetts law. It's safe for consumption. It's packaged, it's not going to have odors associated with cultivation manufacturing facilities. We're not going to be a nuisance to the neighbors. We're still going to have the requirement of being secure. Our vehicles, the building will have full surveillance. With backup alarm systems to make sure there's no unauthorized individuals. We're monitoring the activity constantly on the entire premises, making the neighborhood completely safer. In anyone abutting our parcel. There's safe points for entrance in egress of this. Area, using that business area that I mentioned is going to be key for this property and. Limiting its impact on traffic to Wall Fam Street and the entranceway to the downtown. Using, and again, using that business end of the property. Only visitors and authorized guests will be there, such as mostly commercial vendors potentially, and repairs. No, again, no public will be coming onsite. Regardless, we still have to have the same employee training. And making sure that all the protocols and procedures are in place so that product is not diverted. If issues do arise, emergencies, we have the, the contact with the municipalities in place. Looking at our timeline and what we would hope to anticipate is coming forward at. A secondary meeting, if it is required by the board, with the updated information regarding who bank the state's pre-certification. I'm hoping that is done in the next few weeks. And moving forward with a community outreach meeting, speaking to the actual butters, getting their input. Here, we give specific mail notice of a virtual meeting such as this to discuss it openly. I would go over a presentation very similar to this. With our social equity status and the need for delivery within the greater cannabis market, the Control Commission is prioritizing these applications. And we, in Maynard, could be one of the first few licensed towns that get this benefit. Here, it's going to be a, a parallel approach of gaining that confidence that this is a project that's going to fit in the community. Meets the state's requirement. And then that's when the actual architectural plans are drawn. Specifically mechanically engineered requirements, and the parallel approach is municipal and state. We're going to have the municipal review when we're getting our permits. They're going to have a say on what we're doing. This is just the first step, and in the start of the opportunity for us to prove ourselves as community partners. We anticipate the renovation to be minor in scale and not as time-consuming as some of the other licensed types. Cultivation, manufacturing, with their specific, unique systems, just aren't here. Protections in place for retail or not. This is a, essentially a more secure storage facility and distribution. Lastly, what we need is the Cannabis Control Commission to issue the final license. And that is after they review our building, it's satisfied, our employees and systems are trained and in place, and we're essentially ready to operate. And we hope in. The next year, we would be able to operate, given the limited hurdles required to get into business. Both from a financial standpoint compared to the other license types, as well as the need right now. With the pandemic, I commend the town for their discussion here tonight and their 95% vaccination rate and what they're doing to keep the town safe. I personally have here that the delivery model assists in that, in keeping people secure in their home and having a safe delivery option for those who choose it. While at the same time, making that economic impact. The company as a whole, their Massachusetts residents, small business owners, over 15 years' experience running their own operations. Looking to really capitalize on this new industry here in Massachusetts, and more particularly, the delivery model, which is unique. There are not going to be as many that are allowed at the very beginning, and this is going to really allow Maynard to. Take advantage of that early market where others are going to miss out on it and see potential mistakes and not accepting this new license type. Here, we're going to drive a local workforce of Maynard in the surrounding areas for a better local economy. The idea is more money and more people's product pockets and giving people jobs. And here, this is more better paying jobs than some of the alternatives that could be there. So lastly, I leave you in, with our request. But I want you to think that a decision, a decision here today in allowing this delivery operation at the Two Powder Mill Road. You're making a decision with a team that is dedicated to the cause. Dr. Uma Darnablon is an inspiration to the cannabis industry, who is nationally. And recognized throughout Massachusetts for her efforts. Into the cannabis plant generally. So here, what we have an opportunity to do is use this strong team and make this property into something the town can be proud of. If they are given the opportunity to, to do so. They will be community-based. There are, there is the community impact fee, the direct financial gain that would occur if this is licensed. But the. Community partnership goes beyond the dollar bill, and these individuals will be involved in the community. The part of the policy is to have the positive impact plan and diversity impact plan, which mirrors. The municipality's goals and having a more vibrant culturally unique area. And if we do it right, as the parties intend, this tremendous benefit from the cannabis industry is going to. Flow outwards to the cultural center that Maynard sets out and continues to be. And we're just open for an opportunity to be a part of that. So I'd like to open up the floor, any questions that may be. Had by anyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I got, I got a question. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I just want to know, because you did mention the fact that you took a look at the summary. Summary report from EDC. And you kind of gave us a quick overview of what you think. The building is gonna look like and from an aesthetic standpoint and how it's gonna fit in. And I understand you replacing the business that really wasn't creating foot traffic to begin with, you know, the, the mirror and glass building. Didn't create foot traffic, but I think going forward. Our intent has been to, as an overlay district is to make sure. That we have something in place that's gonna be connecting the downtown area. Bringing some, you know, vibrant businesses to the downtown area. And, um, first and foremost, I would love to see, uh, an archi- architectural design or what this building is gonna look like. Cause you keep saying it's gonna look beautiful and it's gonna be attractive. And, uh, my biggest concern I have is access to the river. Um, that's just my, my view. I would love to see the rendering that you're gonna put in place, how that's gonna provide access to the river. And on some, some point where, um, our plan is going forward and on the core, the powder mill core is to open up the river. So, uh, you are gonna be one of the first people going in there, um, as a proposal. And I would like to see how that fits into what we have as a master plan in place to open up the river. Uh, to the, to the public and how this building is gonna look attractive and. Um, that's just my point and I would love to, uh, for you to have answered a little bit more in specific, uh, the summary report that came from EDC.
Yep, yep. And, um, a good example from the report is the finding of. Uh, potential businesses that would attract visitors. Uh, and I think the two wall fam street property, the white building. Especially if you're crossing the bridge and you're looking towards. Um, and the building is on your left hand side. Uh, as much as it's a gateway, it's an exit way. And you see some of the buildings with art, uh, on them. And then you see this group of clustered buildings that just are, they've been neglected by age and time. Uh, without the attentive care of someone. Um, having what I will call the pride in ownership of the area, in my opinion. Um, and that's what we need to bring to this corner. But whatever is brought to this corner must be viewed with feasibility. And in what is going to actually work out, uh, for it. We have concerns regarding. Uh, other potential uses coming into this area. And what we are proposing is, uh, a, a middle ground of. Being able to have that commercial aspect of the delivery model as the economic driving force of this entire corner. But there's going to, what I think is going to be required to succeed is. The white building turned into a positive use that will attract individuals to, uh, come walking there. Going past the card shop, um, and having the anchors of the wall fam street road. And that'll be suitable and I think satisfy, uh, what the economic development committee was essentially looking for is. They don't wanna just lose it to a commercial use. Um, but going towards feasibility, if you look at the bit, what I continue to refer to as the business end of the. Uh, project, uh, right across the street is both oil petrol based businesses. And it's hard to turn and say that that is going to be, um. Fitting of downtown. It's very difficult to do so because they're industrial in nature. Um, and what I think ties this entire. Corner together and makes it work is the retail side, the two wall fam street side has the seven eleven. There's going to be the foot traffic and people coming across. So it's a matter of the, um, parties. Putting a creative head together on what tenant is going to best move into those units. But their core business is the cannabis side. And if we are unable to get to the financial end that the delivery is going to provide. Uh, then it's going to change, uh, the entire use of the property to a need based. Decision making and that may have, um, consequences that we would not want. Moving forward, uh, where if we can exert control over the entire property, cause the money is coming in. Will be able to have that creative use that's gonna tie in. Um, and in regards to ultimately what it's going to look like. The building condition is not bad, uh, so this is not structural in nature. But it needs attention, uh, old signs need to be taken down, old tenants need to be signage needs to be removed. And then the last thing that I'll touch on, and this is, um. Very important is the, the, the river in having that natural asset capitalized upon. When you're on the bridge, the view on the right, uh, at least from my, um. Maps and what I've been able to find is that's the real view, uh, where on this side where my. Client's property is, there's a lot of trees and it's shielded. So I don't know if we'll be able to, um, guarantee that we could make some type of. Um, kayak launch point. I don't know, I don't think that's gonna be feasible, but what I can say is in our planning and permitting process. We are going to have the discussions with conservation wetlands and see what can be done. But I do know. A n- new paint, new attention to the details of what's on site. And putting some green space on a property that's been allowed to lag by time. Is going to be better than what it is now. And that's what my clients are, um, here for tonight. And what they're committed to into the future is. The end result of what this property turns into. Depends on that highest and ultimate use of if we can get there. But how we have mapped it out is cannabis is the driving force. And that's why we're respectfully requesting the, um. Vote here tonight for a host community agreement so that we can continue on in this effort to bring economic activity to this property. Uh, from all corners of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Go ahead, Justine.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, um. I, and I apologize it. So. You, I, I agree with Armand as far as wanting to see kind of what this is gonna look like. Um, any kind of proposal like that, but it does sound like, um, in what you, in what your presentation was. Renovation is minor in scale, uh, things like that. So it doesn't sound like you're really. Going to renovate the buildings that much from my understanding.
So, so, um, I mean that there is no. Plan right now, for example, to put on an addition, um, to change the, the footprint of the building. Uh, the building is structurally sound. Um, so there's no substantial renovations to that aspect. Our renovations would be, um. Cleaning the property up. Making it aesthetically appealing, securing it. Um, with surveillance system cameras and, uh, any electrical upgrades, storage, security. Um, so, so it's not substantial in nature. Um, but regarding the outside, that would go towards green space. Green space would be the tremendous, um. Need, I would say, as far as what is for the exterior and what's going to go from the wild from what it was to what it can be. It would be the introduction of green space.
And that's. Where are you proposing the introduction of green space to that?
Uh, here, the, essentially, uh, it's around the perimeter of the property is where it would, uh, be. The river itself in, um, it kinda, it's just been, like I said, lagged to the, uh, loss of the ages. Uh, it just kind of left to the wild versus being cleaned up and turned into an actual law. Um, with designated boundaries of. To the roadway, uh, of the law compared to, uh, screening and any green scapes that are planted.
Okay, um, and also, so you, you talk about, um, the white building, um, on Waltham Street. Um, a- and so I guess again, I'm, I'm sorry that I feel like I'm a little late to this, but probably not. Um, so you have other tenants that you're planning, so this. Whole operation isn't going to encompass this whole property and you're planning on bringing other tenants in?
Uh, yes, so there are, um. A few, there's three lots that this property as a whole represents. And, uh, the intent is to have common or general, generally common ownership of its, uh. Individuals we know a part of the company, just in a holding entity for the real estate. Uh, one of the tenants would be Uber Inc. doing the cannabis out of the existing glass and mirror building. Uber is not. Uh, expecting to require a substantial. Amount of space that buildings, uh, about five thousand square feet would be, um, more than sufficient for this type of operation. So here the two wall fam street is really the, um. One that is in need of a good home for, uh, moving a tenant in there. Uh, whether it would be professional based or, um, community based. It, that's ultimately the goal. Um, and of course, under that common ownership. Eh, we're trying to bring positive change to the community and if we can, um. Bringing in the best tenant possible for the community while not potentially for the rent rule, so to speak. That's, that's really the point I was trying to make there.
Okay, so do you have a, a, a tenant type in mind? Or do you have someone in the wings that, that will? Um, that you, that you are gonna reach out to? How, how is that gonna work?
Uh, what I can say is that there is no specific. Organization, individual or entity out there that is being chosen. But there are discussions internally of types of individuals and it's that you professional, um. With health and wellness, um, community or in community based organizations, uh, potential nonprofit example. Um, but it has not been finalized.
Okay, and my final question, David, I'm sorry, I'm asking a lot.
No, go ahead.
I was just, the, the one, the other question is, and I realize it's not a school, um, but obviously you, um, pretty much surround. Um, a, and a business that caters to kids. I realize that there's a lot of security, uh, regarding, uh, cannabis. Um, but I'm just curious whether or not you've reached out to that organization to see how they feel about, about your, uh, business coming in.
And if you could just clarify which, uh, entity.
It excels here, the, the one that's right on the corner, basically hugs your entire.
The tr- the trading card, yeah. Okay, um, so.
It's a lot more than a trading card company, just, just so you know.
Yes, thank you. Um, the. Intent is with this business model of having deliveries. Um, there is not the occasion of, uh, retail diversion, for example, of someone saying, hey, can you go into the store and. And buy something for me, uh, and then meet me at the card shop to, you know, for the transfer out back. Um, the very fact that it's a delivery based model, there is not going to be, um, that availability for diversion. And the very nature and, and the bonus of this type of company is the fact that it is discreet. Uh, the children, uh, are not going to see the sign, uh, on powder mill. And see that this is a cannabis, uh, type company. There's not going to be any indication at all from the exterior. Uh, that it is. The only one, the only ones who we want to know is essentially us and the police. The vehicles themselves that are. Leaving the premises in there. It's not gonna look like any other, uh, specific cannabis type vehicle that would alert them to this type of business. Uh, so it doesn't have the red flag or in your face appeal of even a retail dispensary. Uh, if some of them, that some of them give off. In the idea of just having a, uh, almost blank type style building. For that this commercial part of the building represents. That's exactly what we want. We just wanna fit in and, um, be under the radar. So, um. I did not see this, um, particular use on the corner. As a problem because of the limitation that there's no public coming to the cannabis and it's just the, uh, deliveries.
Okay, did, did you reach out to them though anyways?
No, what, uh, what would happen is when we get to the community outreach stage, everyone gets noticed, um, by mailing. And that's generally when I get that feedback.
At that point, though, attorney Gomes would be, um, the horse be out of the barn. Because the approval is already given for a host community agreement and off you go. So, uh, by that point, the conversation hasn't taken place. Because, uh, you know, that, that seems to be a, a conversation that should to, I think what Justine was alluding to, it should take place before. There's an, uh, a host community agreement between the community and, and the business, just to make sure that there's not a problem. Um, but let's move on. Justine, any other comments?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Chris, anything?
Yeah, I, earlier you said, um, early in the presentation that you made, you talked about. Ten thousand dollars of value going out in each vehicle type of thing. How many vehicles are you anticipating? And what's the total value you would anticipate being in that property at one time?
So, um, here the intent of the applicant is to start off with three vehicles and scale up. As long as they are able to. Um, so here it's just a starting point of having the three vehicles and increasing the amount of. Uh, vehicles that are, we can't handle based on what the business is, uh, requiring. The amount of dollar value in the building at any one time is going to fluctuate. But it's going to be in the one to two million dollar range at any given point. Um, the idea is to have. Smaller drops essentially, um, s- scattered at specific times so that it is not. Um, sitting on a bunch of product and the vehicle in the product itself. Uh, which is an expensive commodity is always moving. We don't wanna be a bank. Uh, we're not sitting on reserves of wine, for example. It's really in and out, in and out. Service of getting it wholesale, sending it out.
It, and how does, how does the, um. The other question I have is related to the different tax. How, how does that work with the, um. If the, if the product is leaving Maynard and you're gonna drive to other communities, do the other communities realize the benefit of the tax? Or does the tax still stay with Maynard? How does that work?
So here, um, our gross sale is what the community impact fee is based on. Um, so you, so Maynard is the one who gets the benefit of the community impact fee. And the state gets their sales tax. The. Municipality that we are delivering to does not get a benefit. But the, the bargain for exchange at the state level, so you know. Is if you have a retail dispensary and you're saying, yes, we want retail in our community. Then they have to allow the delivery within its borders.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, and just to be clear, so the difference, remember the difference between a courier. And a delivery operator license is that the delivery operator takes control of the marijuana. And they actually engage in the sale to the consumer rather than the courier who does the. Um, grub hub, just delivery and they get whatever their ten dollars delivery service fee. Um, so, so in terms of your question, Chris. Because the town has accepted sixty-four and section three. We'd also get the three percent in retail sales. It gets funneled through the state. First, so they don't actually give it directly to you. Um, but we get the three percent sales tax. On all the sales that are occurring from that sus- uh, facility regardless of the delivery endpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, any thoughts?
So this is a relatively new business. I think you mentioned, are there any existing ones yet in the Commonwealth? Or are they all still kind of going through the initial steps right now?
It's my understanding, the first delivery operator license was issued to tastefully baked in Taunton. Uh, down on the south coast near me. And then there is a courier license that is about to be issued or was issued in Boston.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess I have two kind of lines of thought on this one. So. Are, are we just asking questions of, I'm sorry, um, Uber right now, are we digging into the broader kind of EDC report as well?
I think we'll, we'll listen to the EDC's comments after each of us have some questions. So I think the EDC does wanna make some comments relative to, uh, what's going on. But if you have questions directed towards the EDC, have at it.
I'll, I'll wait till they get a chance to speak their, their piece and then I'll, I'll, I'll raise my further comments. Thank you.
All right, okay. Uh, and a couple of questions that I have. Uh, one is, um. I'm going to make an assumption, but you know what they say about that. Um, that if you had not spoken to the folks on, uh, that are at Excelsior. That you have not spoken to the residential neighbor right next door, abutting on the other side about any thoughts that they may have. Is that accurate?
Yes, and, and that goes back to. Yes, and and that goes back to the community outreach meeting, which our intent is to move forward with that.
Yeah, um and again, I I would say um just as important, if not perhaps more important, with a residential neighbor, uh which that is, um those conversations I believe should take place before the horse is out of the barn. Um so that there's some uh you know, understanding from the neighbor. Um the resident who's going to be most highly affected forever, because that's the property they own um relative to what's going on. Then to Chris, uh to Chris's question relative to the number of vehicles, I ex- I assume that there's an anticipation and a hope that um that this business would expand. Um how can we be assured that somewhere down the road, we don't have an an Avis rent-a-car situation where there's fifteen, twenty cars sitting in the, in a lot, all you know, these white uh nice looking Toyota white vehicles?
Uh I would say that we are limita- limited in size uh and capabilities by uh parking area itself uh as well as the building size and what we can actually store in warehouse safely. Uh those are natural limiting factors that are going to reduce uh our full capabilities rather than having a fleet of vehicles in a very large um area. Um we are, you know, choosing the location um based on uh proximity and where it is, uh but also those factors. And we're not going to be able to exceed whatever we're naturally capable of performing uh based on those limitations.
So would the anticipation be as the business expands that if there are are the need for additional vehicles, they would be stored at that location?
The applicant would meet uh whatever the requirement is that the planning board determined uh how many parking spaces were appropriate. That that would be our cap and we wouldn't be able to um exceed it.
Okay, and I see, speaking of planning board, I see that Bill Nemser, our town planner, has his hand raised. So I'm gonna give him an opportunity, perhaps he wants to comment specifically on this. So Bill.
Well, uh we have two uh things I just want to clarify for the board. Uh the first is that um when we're talking about overnight storage of more than one vehicle, that does bring into zoning board of appeals. So that would be an additional um requirement. Um and that would be in addition to the planning board's special permit. So adding a fleet of vehicles would not be an option without a uh zoning board special permit.
And that's any, any number of vehicles beyond one?
Correct, under twenty-five thousand um gross uh vehicle weight, yeah.
Thank you. So, okay, I had some questions on the economics, but Kate answered that. Um so I know that there were some comments that were sent back that I know Attorney Gomes, that you had an opportunity to review that came from our Economic Development Committee. And Ross Greenstein, who is the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, is here tonight with us. Ross, I don't know if you want to summarize a little bit about what the EDC has observed and their thoughts. Obviously, you're speaking as yourself and unless the board gave you authority to speak on on their whole, their entirety, but can give us uh uh you know, and sort of an indication as to what the thought process was from the EDC, where thoughts, where things were going. And then Jeff, you can bounce off with the questions that you had relative to her answers.
So thanks, um Dave. I will actually do my best to represent um the EDC committee, since we spent two full me- virtually two full meetings discussing this. Um and there's, and both Jeff and Armand were at most of those discussions and Megan was too. And I think I noticed there's one or two other members here, so they will keep me honest, so.
I I wouldn't expect anything other, Ross.
So I'll do my best, though, to represent the committee. And if I slip, I, if it's my opinion, I'll be clear to try and be clear about that. We focused our attention um on the site and the compatibility of the business model for the site. So a lot of the things that were discussed um in the presentation about diversion and security, we're not, we we are accepting marijuana, the marijuana business and the marijuana license. And um and weren't questioning any of those things that are the domain of um the CCC. So nothing that we said in the memo should be construed as not as like a backdoor way to say we don't want another marijuana um operation in town. It was really about the compatibility of this model, this business model with that location. And so we did, we had, we heard presentation from the from the, then it was meant delivery. We discussed it with them. We spent two more meetings discussing it and then we had a vote. And that's represented in the memo that that was in the packet. And the recommendation of the group of the committee was to reject the application. And it was because the model, as described again tonight, as a warehouse, does not fit with a number of goals that are listed in the master plan for the downtown retail district or for the zoning tool of the downtown overlay district that is in place to support the town's goals and vision for retail, downtown retail district that's vibrant and pedestrian oriented. Is a destination for Maynard residents and residents in the neighboring communities. And the discussion leaned towards, this is a model that's a warehouse with cars that doesn't have pedestrians walking up and down. So the other businesses in the downtown retail district are losing the opportunity to have passerby's, which is what the whole idea of a downtown retail district is. Um that this model seems better suited to a warehouse location with a parking lot. And and that was really, that's really the focus of our discuss, that was really the focus of the the disagreement with the applicant. So, and I just also just want to clarify one thing, um Mr. Gomes, I think misquoted something in the report. He said that we don't want to lose it as a commercial business. That we actually do think that there's a commercial business there. That's exactly what we want, is to have a commercial business there. So I think that might have been a misinterpretation. So um I don't know, I did, I I would, if there's other members on the call, if any of those people want to, you know, um embellish what I said, I'm happy for them to speak up and answer any questions that other people have.
Have any other members of the CDC that are on have a comment to add, feel free.
Mister Chair. They are from the Economic Development Committee. I think Ross really summarized the the comments from um our previous meetings. I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Bill, your re- your hand is still raised, Bill Nemser. Do you, is that because you don't know how to lower it? Or is that because you have, you have another comment?
Yeah, I think, I think you.
I think it's the former. So, okay, Jeff, do you have comments?
But I guess I'll I'll pause and see if the applicant just, um I don't know that they spend a lot of time responding to the um the business belongs in the warehouse um in particular. So before I get into mine, I'll I'll see if they have any.
Uh thank you very much. Uh yes, and what I would say is, our um design is only using one portion of this property for cannabis delivery, which would be the the warehouse model. Um but the Wallham Street side is going to be uh or in by its design is more of the passer passerby pedestrian path with the bridge and seven eleven across the street. That is what we are trying to preserve as a vibrant addition to the community. We just need to figure out what is going to fit best there. But we aren't, we're gonna have a very difficult time and might not get there. You know, we'll just go to an open market situation. If we don't have the financial backing on the property as a whole, that cannabis delivery allows and is more properly suited on that commercial aspect of the, of the property. And I use the term commercial in the sense of um a manufacturer and selling business of a construction product, like glasses and doors compared to a commercial restaurant or other type of business, which we uh we believe is not suitable for that law because of its limitations of um being small, on the smaller end. Um that you're not gonna get the numbers of customers coming to the site that you need for that type of business to succeed. So what we are doing is coming up with a solution where we can still have that historical use of a uh commercial building that's creating or getting products sold for use off-site while still having that connection to the downtown on the Wallham Street side. Uh but we s- we simply need both, uh and that's what we're trying to put forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure I've heard the business could go to another place within the town um that that as along the lines that Ross suggested, that that's not the right site, but is there other opportunities for the business within the town to stay? So that if they're, they're denied from here, can they find places within Maynard to open shop that are acceptable?
Uh so what I can say is, uh my client chose this property specifically on their own, um based on their own research. Um with my, with our representation, um there is that opportunity. Uh but this is an opportunity before us today, right now, and this property needs to be transitioned into something positive for the community. That's what we're trying to do. And with our representation, um just to hit upon a couple of questions that I don't think were answered all the way. Uh yes, we're going to schedule the community outreach meeting. Um the uh that would be our next follow-up correspondence after today, basically, is asking for authorization to do that meeting virtually, which is required under um post-pandemic requirements by the state. If if the state set, if I'm sorry, if the municipality allows, we can do that meeting virtually, which I think is a great way to do it. Um and then secondly, zoning board of appeals and planning board, uh that's going to be that parallel approach of when the architectural review is getting done. That's, that's when I see those applications going forward. Um but again, we we need to make progress at this minimum stage of the host community agreement. And though, although I don't a hundred percent agree with the way the state has created this licensing and permitting process of getting a host community first, um every municipality does it a little bit differently. Um but this ca- this uh project that my clients are putting forward does have merit uh for me to be able to come up here with m- more than a straight face uh and actually see the true merit behind it and how it could turn into actual benefits of the town, um not just my client and that it's it's worth presenting to you here tonight. And um I think the the limits, limiting factors of uh could there be a possible uh better fully commercial reuse of the property? And it may be out there, but it's just that I don't see it in my client, doesn't see it um from a feasibility standpoint on this specific uh property, which is why we're proposing this dual use of um meeting, meeting the best of both worlds, keeping that downtown um strip open uh and have something visually appealing for that that back look, like I mentioned, from the bridge, while still having the business end there to bringing the money, which is also important, so that people have money can and can go to uh businesses that we're trying to add to this project.
I'll pause for Ross, Susan, and Amanda.
Yeah, I just wanted to um just, uh I don't have a lot to say about this issue. Um and actually, Bill probably knows more about it, but we, the committee did not, the Economic Development Committee didn't speak to uh particularly about, I guess there was some conversation and maybe I didn't represent it in the memo that I wrote um about that this site is at the top of Powder Mill Corridor, which is being just in the midst of a planning exercise with M A P C and the town of Acton. So um I just wanted to remind people of that.
Okay, um I guess I have two lines of thought right now. So I uh I do appreciate the the detailed memo. I think I agree with all the pros and cons that the EDC has written, but I I think I just balance them a little differently and I'm I'm worried about the opportunity cost not being against a a different business, but rather an empty building. And that's, I think, sticking in my head a little bit more um than than the EDC, um but I do respect that the work and the discussions that they've put into that. Uh I'm not sure that we've fully answered the question of what businesses can go there. I'm hopeful that that I'm wrong in that. Um the other line of thought, I'm I'm thinking, and you know, this didn't occur to me during the EDC discussions, but this is a relatively new business. It has um a wider potential market than the retail shops that we have. And that means there could be potentially fewer of them. And I do believe that there therefore could be greater economic benefits to the town to capturing one and um early at that, uh if they're going to be getting market share. So I am worried that unlike, say, a retail shop where if we decline an opportunity, we will have another one down the road that we may not see another opportunity um if they were to locate in an adjacent community such as Hudson that allows this sort of thing. And so I do think that that should be added to the pro list, that we do want to make sure if this is a potential revenue generator, we we have it in Maynard and not somewhere else. So um I think those were my two, two kind of trends of thought to add to the conversation.
Any other thoughts from the board? Now, um go ahead, Kate.
So I have a couple of thoughts and and it might result in some questions that may help you in your deliberation. So I think this one's a little bit tricky, right? Because you have a bunch of competing interests and I see three buckets, right? You've got the existing conditions, this dilapidated building, which has been left unattended for some time that you would really like to see developed. Not sure if it would be this, this entity or not, but you've got that existing condition. You've got the idea that this is a retail area in town that you're trying to develop as such and then also attract folks to this natural asset being the river. And how do you bring that in? Many of the eco- economic development piece of job creation and then obviously revenue to the town. So, so I guess one of the questions for, and this will be for Nicholas, is on the economic development piece, when we're talking about, so to Jeff's point earlier, this is a new area of marijuana that's being developed. So we don't exactly know how it's going to shake out. So these um delivery operators can get their marijuana from cultivators, manufacturers and retailers. The retailers may be reluctant not to give marijuana or sell their marijuana to the delivery operators because they lose some market share, right? And they're sort of, a lot of them are boxed out because they're not necessarily social equity or economic empowerment. I also understand, and I'm not the expert on that side of the house, because I'm I'm on your side, the town side, the municipal side. But I understand there is sort of a shortage of product out there. The cultivators can't keep up with the demand. So the question is, have they done a full market analysis to determine that that they will be able to at the outset keep or acquire one to two million dollars worth of product that then they could then resell, number one. Um number two, on the car issue too, David, I wanted to jump in there. And there is some guidance that says that the cars don't have to park overnight at the actual facility. So they can park off-site. So that could be something if you're interested in um to work into the agreement. Even before it gets to the planning board zoning board stage, but that's another opportunity to kind of mitigate what some of the concerns are. The other piece, and I'm giving you a ton of questions, Nicholas. The other piece is, I heard from you that you need the cannabis in order to finance improvements to the property, including this one that fronts on Wallham Street. Am I getting that right? Wallham Street? Yeah, okay. So is there an appetite from the applicant as to a plan of attack on how to redevelopment and re- redevelop this property as to look and feel? If they get a host community agreement and could that development be built into the agreement? Some sort of guarantee, I don't know exactly what that would look like. And perhaps on the, what you call the commercial side, where the warehouse for marijuana would be, is there an opportunity to maybe make it look more appealing, less warehouse-like? Still comply with the security requirements. So maybe you have your offices for the dispatch. Still comply with the security requirements, so maybe you have your offices for the dispatch and such in an outer hallway with windows, so it's not a block of a s- a cinder block building with no windows and no one wants to go there and they're afraid to walk by it to get to the river. You know, are are there some ways to balance those competing interests um such that we can develop this this dilapidated property? We can bring a new business into Maynard, but we still accommodate all of the things that the um committee had identified in terms of what they anticipated for this property to look like and to be and to contribute to the town.
But I just want to clarify, um that economic development, you you created an economic development bu- bucket? But in some things that ha- are gonna have minimal impact, like employment and excluded the biggest economic development impacts that the committee is thinking about, which is how to create a lively, vibrant downtown retail district that's a place that people want to go for entertainment, eating and drinking. And that does is doesn't uh start to have mission creep from a warehouse district. Please include our vision for the town of Maynard as economic development.
Yeah, that's a good point, Roz. I didn't mean to minimize that. I didn't articulate it as well as you just did right now.
Um I see Linda, you have your hand raised. I do want to say it's nine twenty-four. We've got more items on our agenda. So I want to, I I'm gonna have Linda's comment be the last comment, but I also want to create some takeaways and some homework assignments for the various parties. Um Mr. Gomes, I I think that there was some question raised by uh Armand earlier and also Justine about renderings and what your what your thoughts are and what this is gonna look like, which I think is important for all of us. Um I don't know what else that the board wants to have. Uh if if you were to come back to us so that we can continue our discussion down the road um as to what our thought process might be. Board members, what else would you recommend that you would like to see them bring back to us to help us to determine how we want to go on this? And do you think it's worthwhile for them to come back at this point? Or have you sort of, from what you've heard, do you think we're at a point where we we are not in a place where we would support this? Because I don't want to waste their time uh in having them prepare things if if we don't think that this is something we're gonna support uh eventually.
Uh Mr. Chair, may I may I ask my?
Go ahead, yeah.
I'm actually, I'm just looking for um clarification on the owner. Is the the property owner also in a an owner in the um delivery operators? I I apologize, I've forgotten the name has changed too. Are they one in the same? Are they two different parties? So in other words, I'm sorry, thank you.
To answer your question, I would say they are two different parties from a legal standpoint. Uh but the individuals who are part of those companies, there will be overlap. So a different corporate name, but the individuals who are behind it, operating them would be the same.
Thank you.
Okay, back to back to the question I asked, um any thoughts from the board as to, first off, if there's anything else you want the uh the applicants to bring back to us? Or do we as a board think that this is a non-starter? I I don't really want to have them come back if it's a non-starter.
I feel like there's a lot for them to overcome, to be honest. Um I think I I wasn't really impressed with the presentation. I I apologize. I know they, I know that you put a lot of work into it. I I apologize. I I said that wrong. What I mean is I I was looking for more concrete details as far as what this is gonna look like, what your outreach is gonna look like, how um you know, how it's gonna work. And I I I didn't really see any of that, and I'm not necessarily sure um by the way that you're speaking as far as, you know, yes, by by law, you have to do the community outreach in September. It it doesn't show your willingness to kind of do a little bit more beyond, you know, like it you're you're surrounding a child, you know, you you're surrounding an organization that that is that is very, it it's pretty beloved in town, and you know, you would have thought that that would have been something that someone would have stopped by, walked by, hey, this is what we're planning. Is there something? Um it kind of feels like a lot of what you're doing is just by the guidelines and just by the law as opposed to being willing to go above and beyond. So those are those are my concerns.
Other members? Do you want, do you want to see more? And if so, what? Or have you seen enough?
I don't mind having them come back, having them see if they can overcome that. That's, you know, I I also appreciate not wasting their time either, so.
That's and I'm not hearing anything from the board members.
It's not a, it's not a non-starter to me. It's, you know, we've overcome similar issues in other other instances in the past. You know.
Anybody else?
Just from my perspective, I'm personally not opposed to the business model. Um so there's nothing to do with their business model. I just think that uh from my perspective, you gotta look to see what is it gonna do for that area? What is it gonna do for the downtown? How is this gonna connect, you know, Powder Mill to the downtown as we want, we're trying to develop as we go along? Um would have helped tonight if you came with some rendering, uh so that we could see the image, the picture, what this is gonna look like from the open space you're talking about and the river you were talking about and how the building is gonna look. Uh because the first presentation that was made to E D C, frankly, was someone's, the someone mentioned that you were gonna put up a fence. Um and you know, there's gonna be no access because the vehicles are gonna be hide behind the fence. So I I think to Justine's earlier point, would have been better if there was something to for us to look at. Uh so we could see the vision of what the place is gonna look like. And I would like to, I was also like to see that that building, the old restaurant, what's the plan for it? Uh what kind of tenant you want to put? You did mention professional and all that, but what that building is gonna look like?
Okay, so so Armand, I I I'm what I'm trying to get at here is you said you like, and and I I, no, I no need to apologize. I I agree with you that that I have no real opposition to the business model itself. And I don't, I don't know if anybody does. The issue is, we are trying to start a plan on Powder Mill Road that is that is part of our long ten-year goal. And you speak often, Armand, about our master plan and following the master plan and and you know, making sure we are focused in on the master plan. And in many ways, this model does not follow the guidelines of our master plan. So the question that I would have for you is, given what you've heard and seen, is there any way that you would support this business model at that location? If the answer is no, let's be honest about it and and say that. If the answer is yes, you could, well, then we move forward to the next step. Justine has mentioned she has a lot of hurdles that she thinks would need to be overcome. Uh I personally don't think that this particular location is good for that business model. Because I think there are better locations in town, specifically a a more industrial location than a commercial location than what is being presented. But if the board wants to hear more, I'm all for it, but I I, you know, it's now past nine thirty. I want to shut this off so we can move on, just to see, should we invite them back for more? Or are we at and are we at a point where this spot is not good for us?
Well, if you're gonna invite them back, I think you, they need to, we have to give them some guidance as to what we expect if.
That's exactly the point.
It's point, you know, renderings of the the items that that were discussed, you know, um green space, that the um you know, the the plans to provide access to the river, what that access would look like. You know, what what's the, what's the building gonna look like? Because, you know, frankly, the three buildings that are lit there right now um are not exactly the the best-looking buildings in town type of thing, you know? And and so what, how is that all gonna change? How, what are the um, you know, what are the optics gonna look like as you come into what what a lot of people are calling that a gateway? Personally, I personally, I'm I'm hard-pressed as someone that's lived in town for thirty years to consider that part of downtown, regardless of what any group says. It it, you know, and and I, it, the only people I've ever seen walking there were people that live over there, might be going to Dunkin' Donuts or the guys that worked at um the glass company walking around. So to to tell me that that's part of the um foot traffic for downtown is um, I I don't get that. But you know, what 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 are the, what's the rest of it gonna look like? And then maybe it, maybe at at some point down the road when the um, you know, the um Powder Mill Corridor becomes whatever it becomes, that 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 becomes something, a a different discussion. But as of today, that's a, that's not a real discussion as to, you know, beautification for people to walk by, because who walks by there?
Uh I think, I think, though, Chris, that that's that's.
Nobody walking by there to get to this building i- in this business anyway, under the current model.
But that sort of gets to the whole point of why we have the discussion about our vision for the future is we want that to become the reality. And here's our opportunity to begin to expand upon what we consider to be the actual downtown and the economic area of our downtown and go beyond the triangle that we're so used to. And is this the way to take the first step in doing that?
And and I think, and and Chris, don't, first of all, I don't think it's downtown either, but it is the gateway to downtown. And over the, over the next few years, once quarter, uh Powder Mill gets developed, it's gonna be the connection to downtown. So that means you're gonna have to, you know, you're gonna have to have something that's appealing in that corner, whether it's, you know, I know there's no foot traffic that to your point, but you want to have something that's appealing and it's gonna make that gateway uh more attractive to the downtown area.
I I support, I support that whole Powder Mill Corridor thing as much as anybody. I'm looking forward to hoping to see it getting done, but Armin, you and I will be a camellia garden smoking cigars. It's gonna be a long, long time just because of the 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 slow progress of progress, right? I mean, it's, there's a lot to get done to bring us from the end of Powder Mill to the intersection of Powder Mill and Walton. I I'd, I would just like to see what what, you know, what it might wow us. You guys might wow us and and put something in that says, you know, this does fit the vision. I don't, I don't know what the vision is because I didn't, I didn't see a vision. I saw, you know, eight or ten PowerPoint slides, which is greatly appreciated and the work that went into it, but it doesn't help us as five people to make a decision. I don't think to even, I don't even think we have enough decision to make a decision as to, do we go forward at all? I think there's a lot more to look at before we even get to David's point to have that vote, you know?
Jeff, any thoughts?
Yeah, just to give some specificity, I think um the the only thing that's stopping me from being a um, you know, more fully in favor is that E D C vote. So anything that you can do to A, address the comments that they've made, B, demonstrate why another business wouldn't be able to better fit that model for that spot and then C, which is what David already brought up, why can't that business go to another spot within town? So I think just to to give you a little specificity of what I would be looking for, there it is.
Can I just to help the, like, so I appreciate Jeff the saying, address the E D C. So it would be helpful, like, so if it sounds like the business model is based on the premise that it's gonna be a cross-subsidy of the marijuana business to the to the old restaurant. Um and if that's gonna be, and the alternative to that is somebody else that is is something that we don't know. So this, uh so I hear the argument by the group that's saying this is like the midterm between uh the time when Chris and Day are smoking cigars and uh and what we have today. So I get that. So so what would be helpful is really what what are the businesses that would go in there? That would create that, that um that would, that would make it a human-scale operation and not a car scale or not a car-driven operation that would create some possibilities of people who might want to access the river. Right? So that like, so to like, kind of finding the mid-ground between Chris and what I'm, what Chris is saying and what I'm saying is really what would be helpful for you all to present, because in the absence of you telling us what's gonna go, how that people are gonna use that operation and how you as business people are gonna integrate with the town, we're making things up in our own mind.
Mr. Gomes, do you think you have enough guidance that you can sort of huddle up with your team? And then let us know whether it's, you know, three weeks, a month from now, that you're ready to come back and present sort of what we've suggested?
Uh yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And in a brief forty seconds or so, uh I would, this has been a very productive conversation. Thank you, everyone, for your insight into the unique aspects of your town. Uh I would respectfully request here uh to have authority to conduct a community outreach meeting. I will get that done in the next twenty days and have an opportunity to come before you at your next meeting uh of September twenty uh September twenty-first or the second meeting in September. Uh I think that is gonna give me sufficient time to provide you with a supplemental application to update the new name, uh the new policy and procedure, which Attorney Coleman and I have already started creating for the company, uh as well as addressing the individual matters you've all addressed. Uh but as I leave you here tonight, uh what I want to mention is, this is a social equity-based company by necessity, under state mandate. By definition, these are not a ru- uh substantially wealthy, multi-state operator trying to move into your community. These are local business persons bringing their hard-earned money into this new industry because they see the true potential in it. And if there is any group uh that's going to do it, I see and trust uh the four members who are a part of it. And I will go back and have conversation with them and come back to you with uh an upgrade with some more information. So thank you for your night.
Thank you. Kate, Kate, I have a question. Is there any practical implications negatively or positively if they were to be permitted to go forward and have a community outreach discussion before we've even given them the indication that we're gonna move forward with their project?
Frankly, a- as a matter of course, we don't control the community outreach meeting. We don't monitor the postings or the advertisements. That all gets submitted to the C C C. And I've been in situations where um entities have had to have multiple community outreach meetings because they only stay fresh, so they become stale pretty quickly. I think it's a matter of months. Um but that really has nothing to do with us.
So we don't have to give, we don't even have to give permission?
No, you don't.
Okay.
I I I kind of, I kind of um, it's kind of interesting, the comments that, the last forty-second comments that you took, sir. Because I, regardless of the type of entity or the ownership of the entity or or those type of things, that really has no bearing on whether or not the five of us do our due diligence for the town of Maynard. No matter who the owner is or what the owner's status is or what they're, what they're, you know, the socioeconomics of the owners are, that really has no bearing on whether or not the five of us think this should be accepted and and built and developed in our community.
And and my comments were just specifically to, it's what the state implemented as a mandate of social equity. They designed this statutory uh license type essentially, and that's why we're coming forward and um to put the added expense on. We're going to take a good effort and shot at it. Uh but just the reasonableness of moving to a new location, that's that's astronomical to um this type of designation, that's all.
One one other question, if I may, Kate, um this triggered a thought for me. Is there any limitation as a result of it being a social equity uh situation? Is there any limitation on the sale, for example? We earlier tonight approved uh because they sold their business to a large corporation that we didn't think we were gonna be doing business with earlier. Does the social equity aspect limit their ability to sell within, you know, six months, a year, two years or whatever? The previous, the previous business was six months and we're now dealing with a new owner.
Yeah, so um the the social equity, economic empowerment requirement is for a period of it it's either three years or they may have upped it to four years, to be honest.
Okay.
So um the bigger, you know, national companies cannot, unless they somehow pull social equity to be their front. I don't know. I mean, the background financing could be different, but. pull social equity to be their front. I don't know. I mean, the background financing could be different, but probably unlikely in this.
So there's a level of protection that we're dealing with the same people we'll be dealing with six months from now versus what we just saw earlier tonight. Okay.
And I wanna qualify one other thing, uh as I'm thinking with, I don't, we would need to approve a community outreach meeting if it were to be held virtually. So and actually, as we're sitting here all on Zoom tonight, I didn't think of that piece because the in-person ones, we don't have to approve. So if it were, you would not approve the meeting itself, but you approve the platform. So if if these guys are thinking that they want to have a Zoom meeting and all the things that go along with that, you have to have handicap accessibility and all of these other things that makes it sort of complicated to hold by Zoom. Um, that I I would, I would leave it to Nicholas if that's what he was asking about.
Just to be held virtually, yes.
Surely they could hold a virtual meeting that doesn't count towards the required in the community coast community, just to show that they're demonstrating support of, you know, getting more input from the community, and then they would have to get approval for the one that's for the application later on further down the road. So I don't think we could stop virtually.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, so just a regular, a regular, just go out, have your own Zoom meeting, tell people you're having it, and it's not really part of our business at all. That's sort of your recommend, is that sort of what you where you're coming from, Jeff? Yeah, okay, that that's, yeah, we can't control it, so fine, if you wanna do it, do it. And, okay. So keep in touch, Mr. Gomes, keep in touch with uh Megan and Town Hall, and they'll be in touch with me. The schedule when we can uh get you into an ag- onto an agenda.
All right, will do. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you all, and thanks for your team that's with you too, that didn't didn't get to say much, but uh we appreciate their being here.
Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
All right. Now we've got a number of, uh, well, item number nine on the agenda was removed. Um, that was the art space. It was removed as of uh late in the afternoon on Thursday. Uh, they will be coming to us to speak to us about their issues uh internally in the building within the next couple of meetings. So we should be good. Bill, Bill Nummer, do you have your hand raised? No, that's my cursor. Sorry. So we'll move on to the special town meeting draft articles, and we have a whole boatload of them. And let's see what we can do to get through some of them, if not all of them this evening. We have to get through all of them. So um, so let's start, and Bill, Bill Coleman is with us. Bill?
Yeah, hi, how are you doing tonight?
Hi, Bill. Good. Thank you for all your work on this stuff. Oh, my God. Uh, very much appreciated. Um, so we've got in front of us, we've got Control N O. I don't wanna skip any.
I only, I've only submitted two, so they should be it, but the thing is, is that I don't have the control numbers for them on what I submit it.
You submitted, you submitted the nuisance one and you submitted.
Planning board member.
Planning board member.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you know what? Let's start with the easier one.
Yeah, I agree.
The planning board member.
Yeah, that that just came from that um, Greg had pointed out to me that in the bylaws, the way that the um, make sure I'm to say the right nickname, the associate member uh the term, it was sort of unclear. It was implied that it was a five-year term, even though it wasn't really stated, it was because the other members are five-year terms. Um, pointed out that in the zoning board uh or in zoning bylaws, it actually states that the associate member term is three years. So we're just kind of correcting this to make sure that it matches with what the zoning board is doing. So, so that that one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and I I don't have any issues. Any members of the board have any questions on that? So I think we can, uh, if we wanna do it one at a time, we can accept and approve that one and move it along unless anybody's got an objection, if uh if I can have a motion on it.
You just wanna do them all at the end, though?
We can, but if if just in case for some reason we don't get to one of them or skip all. But uh, we'll do them all at once, then. Let's let's move along.
Okay, um.
Let's go to the nuisance one.
The nuisance one. Um, I submitted another copy that is a redline version of it that shows what got changed. Do you have that copy?
And Megan sent it to us, yes.
Okay, uh, I think that's probably the easiest one. I'll go through that um just to kind of point out what got changed. Um, basically, from the the one that we were had submitted for the annual town meeting that got withdrawn. Uh, Lisa Mead had gone through it um and pointed out that in many cases, we weren't saying who was the enforcing official, and there were some other issues that were going through it. So we addressed um most of that. Um, basically, what we did was that for most of these things, um, the pu- the enforcing official is the police chief or it's designee, um, but it's also that the individual sections can also add another enforcement official for it, so that if it's something that actually also then falls under the Board of Health or falls under the building inspector or the building commissioner or DPW, that it can be both the the chief of police or designee or DPW and or designee kind of thing, so that goes through with that. And also, um, we added or actually moved a section, which is now section number two, that all sections of subsections shall be considered separable, so that if sometimes one is found void or unenforceable by court of law, the remainder shall stay full and force, so that basically that's covering everything in this here. Um, as we, as you look through with like section three or or section four, it's basically we're we're specifying what the fine should be for the enforcing official, as I, as I said earlier, as you go through it. Um, one of the things that for the new section five was that um that basically the bylaw only applies to public cemeteries, so that it doesn't um this part of the 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 bylaw where it says basically who frequent any uh we did say any cemetery or graveyard in town, it basically is because Saint Bridges is private property, that it doesn't apply to them uh on this, it's a matter of trespass. If if somebody's there and bothering, you know, Saint Bridges Church can can call and make a complaint on it, but it's more because of trespass and not because of what we write in the bylaws. At least that's my understanding I I got from from Lisa um for that. Um, I'll just keep moving on through here. Uh, as I said, it's basically adding um enforcing officials in section six. Uh, section seven was just uh setting a fine. In section eight, it was um the enforcing official again and also setting a a of the fine value. We withdrew what was the old section seven and section eight. This is where for people uh essentially making marks or vandalizing um figures on uh I mean, read the whole thing, walls and other things. Again, it becomes a trespass issue. And the other thing that where we had, there was a separate one in there that it was, if it was, make sure I write it, an indecent figure or something, it becomes a a freedom of speech First Amendment um issue that you can't call something out because of, oh, you're you're offended by what was written as opposed to that somebody just wrote graffiti on something um for it. And it was basically what we found was that in state law, there are stronger enforcements on basically the exact same thing, so it just matter, just leave it in in state law rather than in the bylaw um for that. Um, section nine, again, it's just a matter of just kind of updating this a little bit to make sure things were were clear. Um, with it, that Lisa had pointed out, uh, we had withdrawn some things about. Yeah, again, it's it's basically going into like profane and indecent insulting language that you can't sort of regulate that.
Um, can I pause you on that one?
Excuse me?
Could I, could I ask a question about that?
Thing.
Um, so I understand if the profane language is on private property, we can't do anything about that, but does that prevent us from banning on public ways, for instance, um town on sidewalks, the roads, et cetera?
Lisa, that's what the the information with the chief of police and with Lisa is that, yeah, you're if you're then trying to um sort of have a government enforce what a person can say.
But I'm even, I'm I'm worried about somebody spray painting. I don't care if it's profane or not. I don't want somebody spray painting something on the streets or the sidewalks, et cetera. Um, does this?
Well, there there, as I said, there's there's in um state law, there's already things in there. And I'll I'll I'll, I don't have that readily available right now, but I can look that up and and send it uh to the 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 board.
Okay, so it's covered by state law?
Yeah.
I remember one of the issues that uh caused concern a year ago was uh profane sign that was on private property but could be seen from a public way, particularly um the rail trail with with language that was inappropriate. And there, I think we learned that, well, you know, inappropriate to some. Um, I think we learned that we cannot regulate that because of the fact that that particular that particular sign and any others that might be like it were was posted on private property. And even though it's visible from a public way, it's not controllable. Is that i- is that accurate, Bill, from your understanding?
Yeah, that that's that's my understanding of it.
Yeah, okay.
For it. Um, okay, let me just see where we are here. Okay, section ten. Um, basically, this is talking about skateboarding. Um, and it's the thing that uh we had had some give and take with the uh chief of police. And I know that at town meeting, some people were raising the issue of that they were kind of shocked to find out that we had basically not allowed skateboarding to occur on any sidewalks. I mean, somebody could do it in their own driveway, um, but not on any public property. Um, so basically, what we did go back and forth with is that that um persons shall be permitted to coast or skateboard on any sidewalk outside of the business district, but shall yield the right of way to pedestrians and give audible signal before overtaking and passing any pedestrians. Um, this is similar for someone riding a bicycle on the sidewalk as well. Um, the other thing I found out uh when doing some research on that is Massachusetts considers skateboarders to be pedestrians so that they should not be riding in the street unless they're using a crosswalk to 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 cross the street. So really, the the alternative for them to use skateboards as a mode of transportation is to ride them on the sidewalk.
What happens in the portion of the rail trail that falls within the business district?
Uh, they are allowed to u- oh. How did we word this?
But isn't the where it says.
The way, the way, the way the language is, is that it should be, it's on the sidewalk. No person shall coast or skate on any sidewalk inside the business district, street, public way or town, except uh noted. Except we're noted and the Aspid River Rail Trail. So they are allowed to skateboard all through the rail trail, even if it goes through the the thing, because the rail trail isn't
I got you.
A town sidewalk.
Yep.
Even even though, you know, it's paved and stuff, it's it's it, I re- I realize we're kind of splitting hairs on that, but it's still a matter of that that's what the purpose of the rail trail is for.
No, I think.
One of the purposes uh for that. Um. Let's see, section seven, um, the only thing we added to this was um golf carts on the Mayor golf course property because now it's town-owned property, so we're permitting that. Um, for it, we lowered the fines from three to one hundred dollars for that. Um, there was just some grammatical change in um section twelve and just set the fine to be three hundred dollars. Um, for thirteen, it was more a change of that Lisa had made when uh gave initial feedback that it was just to stress that it's public streets. And uh she took out which the town is obliged to keep in repair. I assume that because it's a public street, that goes without saying that the town is obliged to keep in repair. Um. Section fourteen. Really no changes except for the fine and also that the building commissioner or designee is or police chief is the enforcing uh person. Um, fifteen. This is just updating the fines for this and also designating.
It changes the, it changes the title of the dir- of the superintendent of public works to director of public works.
Yeah, so that that changed with that. Um, this is designee. I'm I'm sorry, I I listened through your whole meeting tonight, and I I know you guys are probably a little bit burned out, and I'm burned out from sitting here, so excuse me from uh there. I I was nice and fresh at seven, but uh when it starts getting to be ten o'clock, it's, I start dragging a little bit here. So so excuse me here. Um, basically, we get into in section seventeen bicycles. And I know that was a big issue. The thing is that what everybody sort of brought up, whether it was the handlebars that went over your your shoulders or carrying packages and stuff, they were all directly from state law.
State law.
I mean, you can't change that, and that's what people wanted to modify um with it, and they didn't realize that. But I have worked with the people who uh and off the top of my head, I forgot the names, but uh, you know, after that uh special town meeting last year, uh, I was in contact with the the woman, um, what is her name, Donna Dotson, I believe, that came to your meeting and talked about bicycles and stuff, and basically explained to her that this, these things were were directly from state law uh common, and also uh the gentleman who had a couple um um uh amendments to what we were doing. So I think we are all straightened out with that. And basically is is that uh things which changes that we found that um class two electrical bicycles are allowed on the Aspid River Rail Trail. Um, the fine cannot be more than twenty dollars according to state law. Um, and we just kind of went through everything because from what we had or what we currently have in the bylaw does not address um uh bicycle seats, towing of 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 items, you know, with with a with a trailer or things like that that are made for it. Uh, we had basically that you weren't allowed to tow something, but I think it was more case of like, oh, you're just tied like a wagon to your bike or something like that as opposed to something that's actually made for that purpose, whether it's for a person or whether it's for carrying goods uh on that, so that we kind of work that in um for it as well. Um. And also, um, before we go into what was section fourteen, I wanna thank Megan for a lot of help uh with coordinating a lot of this with with members of Town Hall to see if they would be responsible as the enforcing official as well. One of the things that she brought back uh from uh the building commissioner was that um the state building code had a stronger enforcement on awnings uh for it, and it made no sense to have it in the bylaw um for it, so we removed that uh from that uh with it. Um, going into section eighteen and nineteen, these were things that we had updated uh in a few few years ago with uh out outside um dining, so sidewalk dining and also uh uh alcohol outside uh with dining. Um, again, in section twenty, it's just a matter of setting a fine. Um. And we joined um what was section twenty-two as and became part of I think my my computer monitor just, okay, I think I I think I touched my my keyboard by accident and I lost you guys for a second there. Um, basically combining that into to one section since they were related to each other. Um, with it, so that goes straight. Um. In section twenty-one, we took out uh even though in the the paragraph I have, it's the last read uh thing pulled out. That's basically saying, that was just saying that if this, if something in this section was was found invalid, it's still is separable, so still be, and that's what Lisa had suggested, that we should um just put that in at the beginning for the whole thing. Um, to do it. Um, we are keeping in uh what was section twenty-three will now be section twenty-two, which is the current uh minimum property standards for residential properties. uh minimum property standards for residential properties. Um, Megan had raised the issue um probably for uh annual town meeting before we withdrew um the nuisance article. That without it, there wouldn't be anything to help enforce some um complaints that people have with neighbors on, on how they're keeping their property. And even though we believe some of this is maybe outdated and needs to be updated, we don't want to be caught without anything on the books to help enforce that and help maintain uh you know, a neighbor's complaint against somebody who is, is letting their property um, um for whatever reason. You'll go into like disrepair. Um, for it. So what we've essentially is doing is moving everything around that and not touching that, so if you look in the warrant, we're not really, we're not saying anything other than changing the number of that, of that section. And everything that if you look in the current chapter of the bylaw, there are some um sections that would follow after that, we've moved them to before it, so I think it all works out um for that. Are there any specific questions on any of the sections that I have, I know I went through it quickly and I think most of the changes are such that, like I said, we're either uh calling out an enforcement official or we're setting a fine from being like a two to two hundred dollar fine to a hundred dollar fine or, you know, whatever it is. We're just stating a, a, a set value for that.
Yeah, no, I, I think you did a great job and uh especially given that it was kind of, kind of rushed, but but I, I got, I think we all got the gist, I think it's going to be critically important at town meeting that the redlined issues become evident and secondly, that it become apparent right from the outset of any presentation that uh the rest of it has been our bylaws, we're not here to change anything, we're not here to create new law, we are just really editing to make it cleaner. There's really nothing new here and I think that's where part of the problem came up last year where people started thinking this was all brand new and hey, you're saying you can't do this, well, we couldn't do that for the last fifty years.
Yeah, that, that's, that's my plan and that's why I submitted the redline copy that hopefully it, it can be a handout um at, at town meeting uh for, so people can look through it and, you know, whether it's posted on website ahead of time as, as a read ahead as well um for it. Yeah, it, it's just the kind of thing where I didn't think it would be needed. But yeah, I agree with you Dave, that obviously it became apparent uh very early on in discussion that people were, were thinking this was whole, brand new thing and they didn't quite get the whole delete the current chapter and replace it with this one. Um, thinking that I guess the whole thing was, was brand new as opposed to that, that rather than piecemealing you know, a hundred little sections and changing a little bit of text and when people would look at it, they couldn't, couldn't quite understand what, how it all fit together in trying to do it in one way where someone could read through it and make sense of it. It just lost the whole point, you know, we were trying to update it.
Agreed, alright, any questions on those from the board? Okay, those two look good. You're, I think that's it for you Bill, so you can, you can leave if you want, otherwise.
I, I, I will. Alright, well, thank, thank you very much, and I'll just affirm, I did tell uh Greg this. I had submitted this prior to the committee voting on approving it, but we met, um when did we meet? Last week and we, we did approve everything as, as we had submitted it. So we're, we're good to go.
Good, thank you.
Alright, and good night.
Yep, good night. Alright, so for us, we then need, uh we've done, oh, we've done N. Then there is F, control F, which is transfer from water stabilization. Justin, you want to quickly comment on this and I mean quickly, we, we're going to try to uh make this as efficient as possible.
Um, thanks David, yes, I will tell you, I went into quite the detail with FinCom in regards to both of the control articles. One for water stabilization sewer. Um, the quick oversight is really utilizing both stabilization accounts to create uh reserve accounts in the traditional manner, allowing for maximum flexibility for response mechanisms that we deal with. Um, both from a DPW aspect to run the water and sewer utility, but as yourselves as the water commissioners. Um, I, I like to bring back just the simplistic nature of what happened recently with RBC repairs and the failures. Our operating budgets are not um set up to handle large repairs or large failures, um either on the water side or the sewer side of our um operating budgets. Creating reserve lines allows for maximum flexibility and to um allow the water commissioners to react immediately as opposed to setting up a emergency town meeting to utilize stabilization funds um to address situations or to um request deficit spending through DOR, which is a frowned upon practice. It's there for a break glass in case of emergency, but setting up um a fiscal plan with reserve accounts is a more prudent um approach for both utilities.
Thanks and um, any comments from the board on this? My concern, if you want to put it that way, and I understand Peter Campbell made similar comments at the planning, at the uh finance committee. Um, is whenever I see the perception even that authority is being taken away from town meeting voters relative to stabilization fund um allocations. Um, that it becomes a little bit concerning. Um, and you know, because that's the town's savings account per se. Uh, however, I recognize the um, the concerns relative to being able to act swiftly and move when you have an emergency that comes up. So uh my thought process, is there another, is there another mechanism by which the same thing could take place? But yet we have the secure aspect of theoretically town meeting oversight. The only thought I came up with and, and thinking of it uh quickly would be if we somehow devised a plan where uh in order to access stabilization, it required and a majority vote, not only of us as the uh water sewer commissioners, but of the finance committee as well. Uh, and that protects the um this, the sanctity, if you wish, of the town meeting voters by having the oversight of the finance committee. Uh, you know, I don't know how we would change an article if, if, you know, I don't know if this board would even want to do that, but my concern is strictly over the protection of the uh the rights of the, of the residents to have control of those stabilization funds without just giving carte blanche authority to the water and sewer commissioners. Um, because typically when any monies are spent over certain amounts, town meeting has approval. And uh, you know, we did something similar on a one-time basis, if you recall, with the uh with the roof at Green Meadow when we needed to act quickly with Green Meadow, we had at that point, we gave strict authority to the town, to the finance committee, which I wasn't overly, overly enthused about. Um, but the finance committee had strict authority over that. But those, that's my concern. Go ahead, Justine.
Um, I, 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 I hear what you're saying David, but I'm wondering if you know, so a couple of things, um, the first is that because we are elected by the town. Technically, if the town trusts us, the townspeople trust us to make that decision, that would, to me, I think that that's, that's what, what, that's why we're here, we are here to be good stewards of all of, all of our resources, um and I think all five of us take that extremely seriously. You know, but the other thing that I kind of look at this almost like the um, and I'm, I'm probably overs a lot, but remember a long time ago, uh, I don't know how long ago. They uh, the schools put a um they have, they were able to take ex, you know, leftover money at the end of the year and put it into I believe it's an account for special ed, unexpected specialized type of thing. I kind of look at this as being almost like that as we're just taking the money that we already had, but we are putting it in another account that we can spend it if need be, so it's, it's just, I don't know, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it.
Mr. Chair David, I can speak a little uh in a little more detail. So one of the requests specifically the RBCs is to immediately pay for the cost of the RBCs. So it's in a traditional manner that we're looking for town meeting to vote for the use of that stabilization fund. The other being the water is a um anticipatory cost related to our PFAS situation. And um addressing that now, as opposed to creating a town meeting in the middle of winter when we violate, we need to enact our emergency operational plan. Um, as discussed with the finance committee, um the enterprise fund works a little different than your traditional general fund. Um, your free cash is technically uh your retained earnings and your retained earnings cannot be spent without uh appropriation through town meeting. So as discussed with finance, stabilization is almost a redundant system when it comes to enterprise fund. One of the things that enterprise fund doesn't currently have in place, which is a, a strong financial model, which is a reserve fund. Traditional to how general funds act in a manner that allows the water and sewer commissioners or the select board as policy set to approve the spending or appropriation of reserve funds for special situations such as a PFAS emergency or a future RBC failure, et cetera, within the utility. As discussed with Peter, the long-term financial goal, and I brought it to this board on the last two um rate increase conversations is to have our retained earnings roughly be about fifty percent of our operating costs within our water enterprise, fifty percent within our sewer, while the most prudent financial model for the enterprise fund would to have retained earnings at fifty percent. Your stabilization somewhere at the twenty-five to thirty percent and a reserve fund somewhere at the ten to twenty percent range. Unfortunately, our financial models within the enterprise fund are not strong and we have large problems and situations with capital improvement moving forward. What I would love to continually see moving forward is to not only look at capturing um the needed cost at the time when we talk about rate increases or the potential need for uh rate adjustments, but to look at it, you know, threefold. Capital problems, operating costs and keeping up with inflation. And three, building our financial flexibility moving forward. So when I come to the board with a rate increase that says, hey, we're looking at, you know, four or five percent and the conversations are had, you know, inflation's three percent. We're not just talking about inflation at that point, we're talking about building our financial model moving forward for maximum flexibility. We're looking at addressing the capital projects that have been identified and immediately responding to those as necessary to help reduce costs further down the line. And number three is keeping up with inflation so that we don't lose track and move backwards as we have in years past. So that's kind of the build to that and this is the request to try to capture the reserve fund aspects, which allows for maximum flexibility with a financial model that is already weak to begin with.
Yeah, Justin, we, we can't be the only town that needs to figure out how to pay for emergency water sewer repairs, so how do they do it in either other towns or district where the select board is not the water commissioner?
Uh, well, oh, whether or not the water, well, typically.
Let's, let's just do, uh, uh, how would a town that's similar to our structure respond to emergencies um in a normal sense?
So you can technically pay for water and sewer issues through general fund, it's not prudent practice, but if you chose or the town chose not to enact this um allocation changeover and we had to uh act immediately, we could, one, request deficit spending through DOR, which we did in FY twenty-one for the RBC's unanticipated failures. But that was really to cover the engineering cost to start to get to the point of design bid. And now we have a laps over of FY twenty-two, so we awarded the bid in FY twenty-one, but our operating line had to overspend, which was minor, but it wasn't overspent. Which DOR frowned upon.
I'm not asking for the alternatives, what do other towns put in practice in this situation?
Well, I'm giving you the two, so typ- typically you can overspend, which is allowable through DOR, where you deficit spend, it's just bad practice. Generally, the financial model is exactly what I just highlighted. Where you have a strong retained earnings, you have a stabilization fund and you have a reserve fund built into your, into your um financial package, we don't have a reserve fund and we have a moderate to weak retained earnings and we have a bare minimum stabilization fund. We're creating that practice.
In, in this proposal, what will happen to our stabilization fund, which we're now proposing to move to a reserve fund?
So the stabilization fund for the sewer, the request for the RBC um payment eliminates that stabilization account, meaning it zeros it out.
So we will not have a stabilization fund, we will move it all into a reserve fund?
Well, that reserve, so the, specific to the sewer, the sewer is an allocation of pay for services that are contracted out. Which we need to pay for one way or another, we're either taking it from stabilization or we are deficit spending, which then will hit retained earnings one way or another, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is coming out of that account.
Are we creating a new fund and closing the old one, or are we creating a new one and planning to put money into both funds?
So our model for this specific allocation sewer in general that is going to an RBC line specifically, not reserve fund. But the water stabilization is going specifically to a reserve fund, which will carry over in FY twenty-two. If unspent, the trigger with enterprise funds is it will hit retained earnings. That retained earnings can be allocated at annual town meeting only. That annual town meeting allocation would become a repetitive policy where we identify roughly our goal for reserve funds, like I said, go back to the ten to twenty percent range and it will become a repeating pattern. And as our retained earnings kind of meet our fifty percent goal and we start to get our reserve funds, we can talk about incorporating stabilization to build that threefold model. But right now, as you may not remember, our water specific, our water enterprise retained earnings is far below our threshold.
You're proposing put into a reserve fund for now and then in the future, if we can build it up, then put some into the stabilization fund, but that's not in the short-term plan?
Yeah, the short-term plan for this special town meeting, which is in front of you for deliberation, is direct five hundred thousand dollars from water stabilization into a line item called reserve funds under the water enterprise fund, which will capture five hundred thousand dollars. That will be used or triggered for emergency purposes only, specific to a, a situation like PFAS. And the policy is, just like the rest of our policies when it comes to reserve fund, is the DPW directed through the TA's office would make a request for spending out of that reserve fund to the water and sewer commissioners for approval based off of X payment, whatever needs to be done.
So um, real, real quick and I, uh, real quick, so if I'm understanding this correctly, so for, for the annual town meeting in May, there'll be, there, there may be a warrant article that is going to try to put money in the, so it's going to be like the budget that is going to be incorporated into that warrant article. The reason we're doing, we're entertaining this now is because we have things that need to get paid, paid for, or we need to be on top of it in the event we're going to have to pay for it prior to May.
Correct, yeah. Because we don't have the flexibility to use retained earnings outside of an annual town meeting vote. This is the method to prepare ourselves and pre-position ourselves for, well, one is to pay for an actual product that we need to pay for. And two is to position ourselves appropriately to respond to the rising situation we have with our water treatment system in regards to PFAS. But we will start to create that model of consistency where there's a reoccurring article at every town, annual town meeting that has an identification factor, so depending because re- retained earnings aren't a guarantee, it's the combination of revenue over expectation for sales of water and sewer and um spent or unspent expenditures based off a budget, so it's a combination of two that can hit retained earnings. So we don't necessarily know what that is until the books are closed. So we can't position ourselves for them until it's an annual cycle, but we have two big problems in front of us and this is our reactionary approach to the RBCs and our proactive approach to PFAS situation.
I'm not saying I would want to do this, but Megan, I have a quick question, do you know if we approve this and pass it to the FinCom and the FinCom were to not recommend it, would we have an opportunity to withdraw it before town meeting? And again, just I want to know what my option would be.
Good question, um. I know that.
If you don't know, you want to get back to me tomorrow, that's fine.
Yeah, there's a possi- I mean, you can have another meeting. At, at the plan right now is for the warrant to be approved at the next meeting, so I don't know what the FinCom's schedule is.
It could still be withdrawn, even if it, if it appears in the warrant and the FinCom has. It could still be withdrawn even if it, if it appears in the warrant and the FINCOM has rejected it. We could withdraw it anyway.
Or we could also, you know, I mean, I understand it's a financial item, but we could also move forward with it.
Yes, no.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. But to Jeff's point, if, if he was concerned because the FIN is, and I don't know if, how the majority of the FINCOM felt on it. I, all I heard was that there was, there was some comments along the same concerns that I expressed. And it was a, it was a respectful conversation. Is, is, that was the commentary I heard.
No further questions for me.
Okay. So, we can move on to the next item unless somebody else has any concerns on that particular one.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay, next one is the draft control C for the manured golf course receipts reserve fund transfer. Megan, are you going to talk, speak to that or? Justin?
Yeah, I don't have much else to say beyond sponsor comments, Justin, if you have anything.
Yeah, that, this is actually pretty much my article. This is a situation where we use the receipts received from the revenue gain through the contracts. That we have with Sterling Management and the Maine Country Club. So, this is to capture the funds to allow us to utilize that revenue stream that's owed to us or has been paid to us through the contract obligation. For capital improvements, i.e. the roof that is failing at the golf course. And I'm sure that Chris can tell you that the roof is failing miserably. And it has been for several years at the golf course. It is now starting to. Interfere with function facilities. And there is a potential interference from capturing licensing recently to. From the health department in regards to allowing for food distribution there. Based off of some of the situations that are happening with the roof failure. I will tell you that the roof failure is a large project, even though it is a small dwelling. It captures an entire HVAC unit that is housed on the roof. And it's not just the mechanical unit, but it's actually the duct work, et cetera. And if you're unfamiliar with the clubhouse, the clubhouse is a modification of three different additions. That were kind of duct taped together to begin with. So, the entire roof structure has to be redesigned. And that also comes with the pavement processes, asbestos has been identified and lead has also been identified. So, the cost will be quite largely to have that.
Is, is this, is this allocation though enough to cover the, the project that you just described?
So, David, right now, we are probably about seventy-five percent design. So, we have not captured the estimate cost. But this is the exhausting of the entire account to position ourselves to move with that. That we do have some flexibility outside the receipts received account. We could potentially go to Sterling Management's Kevin Osgood and request our. Our final payment in advance, if he'd be willing to do it, to capture the cost of the capital improvement. And that's something that we could potentially discuss when that time comes. We are anticipating the cost that we're requesting to cover the full roof replacement. But until I have those hard numbers, I cannot give you that accurate answer.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, the next one is the establishing, establishment of a special revenue stabilization account for marijuana. I think Greg has spoken to us about this and a couple of times. I think we have a grasp as to what he wants to do. Taking that three percent that we get from the, the community enhancement fund. And creating a, creating a, through community enhancement fee and creating a, an account for which we can expend. To do the downtown enhancements that we and other. Related items to the impact from marijuana. Anybody have any questions on that? And Megan, did I appropriately outline that? Okay, so I think we understand that one. The next one, excuse my language. The next one is control D, transfer from sewer stabilization. Justin, I assume you have some comments on this one.
Yeah, I kind of spoke to both of them early, just to kind of give you a high recap. But this one is specific to RBC failures and how we're going to pay for the costs associated with those repairs.
This is just, this is just taking funds from the stabilization fund, transferring over to the traditional source. Nothing unusual about the method that we're doing this. It's just identifying an issue and paying for it.
Yeah, this is the traditional stable, so it's identified specifically for RBC. So, if there is leftover funds, we would reallocate those at another time. And again, our plan is to reallocate funds on annual town meetings for future reserve fund lines that will repetitively. You know, progressively work every fiscal year to meet our financial goals and models.
Yep, okay. Any questions from the board on that? So, the next one is the, is that the amended general fund?
Yeah.
We've had discussion on this with the, the amounts that Greg wanted to shift. Is, Megan, do you want to go into this briefly or Laurie, if you have any comments on it? No?
Uh, no, I can go into it if you want. Yes, we, Greg and I had identified some deficits in the budget that was voted in May. So, this article will address those deficits. There was a deficit for the liability insurance. There'll be a deficit for the town clerk's budget. And it also addresses the deficit in local aid. Due to the governor's newly signed budget, we will see a reduction in our local aid. Due to our assessments for school choice and charter schools being increased. So, that created a twenty-five thousand, seventy-two dollar deficit in the previously approved budget that we needed to address. So, speaking with our chief assessor Angie, she had given us a more accurate assessment of what new growth will be certified at. And that came, she's a, she's saying that we should sort of, new growth should be certified around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which would give us an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue source to address these issues. He also, Greg also wanted to address the need for the health agent in this budget proposal as well. As well as aligned for. What, what do you call, contract negotiations for personnel. We are in negotiation with two unions at the time being, and this would give us a funding source to pay for those negotiations. For the settlements to those contracts.
Okay, any questions from anyone?
I'm, I'm just, I want to be clear, and I know there is an email back and forth on this. Where do we get to that one hundred and sixty-five number?
Okay, it incorporates, I did send you, I believe Megan sent you my spreadsheet. And let me pull it up. Okay, the one sixty-five is for the town clerk's budget increase of seven thousand. Liability insurance increase of forty thousand. Contract negotiations for thirty thousand. A health agent at forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Because of the other deficit being odd. And then we're also increasing the budget. We're also increasing local receipts by forty thousand dollars. Due to receiving marijuana impact payments ahead of time. Originally, we were doing, we were putting them into the stabilization fund, which we're creating for that. But due to receiving, I believe it was Green Star, one of them, Megan can tell which one that was. They decided to pay the town quarterly instead of the agreed upon annually. So, I reached out to Kate and Lisa Mead. And they also said that it needs to be considered general fund revenue because we've not created the stabilization account yet. So, we're budgeting for that in the general fund.
So, then where does the twenty-five thousand of assessments don't get added into that? Is that not a?
No, it's actually shown up in the revenue in local aid. It's also netted. The assessments are netted against what we will receive for local aid. So, if you look up further into my spreadsheet and it shows under the revenue sources for local aid. You'll see chapter seventy, education, chapter seventy, you'll see charter school reimbursement. Less assessments for charter school, assessments for school choice. Up in that area there is where it nets out to the difference. You'll see, it actually nets out to a thirty-five thousand dollar difference there. But after our FY twenty-one tax rate was approved, there was a ten thousand dollar, ten thousand. Eight hundred and eighty-eight dollar amendment to our new growth. So, the total deficit for the priorly, the previously approved budget would be twenty-five thousand, seventy-two dollars.
Okay.
And that spreadsheet will be an appendix in the warrant so that everyone, you know, can follow along with that.
Right, what I sent you is typically Mike's appendix A, but it showed the original budget, the governor's signed budget. Showing the difference in the revenue that we were going to receive and the special town meeting revised budget.
Including where we lost the twenty-five thousand on the assessment.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So, those are, those are the non-planning board zoning articles. That have been presented thus far. If we can move them, I would ask that the stabilization one be pulled out separately. That we can do the others individually or as a group. But I, I plan on opposing the one on this, the stabilization.
I'll move to accept and approve and move to the finance committee for review and comments. The following articles for a special town meeting, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Golf course receipts reservation, reserved appropriation. The FY twenty-two budget revision, marijuana community impact payment stabilization. Nuisance amendments and the planning board member amendment.
And I would add the sewer stabilization transfer because that's not associated with the issue that I have. It's the, it's strictly the water, I believe.
Okay. And add on to the sewer stabilization as well.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand? Can't hear you, Armand.
Yes.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
I'm a yes too. And then can we go to the one that we didn't list, which is the water stabilization transfer? Justine, you want to make that mention?
Yeah, move to accept and approve and move to finance committee for review and comments. The following article for special town meeting, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And that is going to be the water stabilization transfer.
Okay, any further comments? Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Chris.
I, I, I saw you say yes. Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a no on that. Okay, we'll move on to the zoning articles. I know Bill's still here hanging in. How many are there, Bill?
There are five zoning articles.
Yeah.
There.
Okay, I see them. All right, yep.
Yeah. And what you're doing at this point is we're requesting a referral to the planning board. So, they can hold a public hearing on them. They would vote to recommend or not recommend to the town meeting approval of the articles. Then they would come back to the select board.
Okay, and, and this will all be done timely for the upcoming special?
Yeah, we have to scoop.
Yeah, okay. So, can you give us the Reader's Digest version on all five, just so we understand what they are?
Yes, a lot of it was to, I mean, you know, the, the gist of it, the first, really the first. Three are just issues that we've encountered in downtown, under the downtown overlay district zoning. And, and, you know, we've been utilizing it more than it has been perhaps in the past. So, it's raised some new. Items that we thought needed to be tweaked or adjusted, things such as requiring two parking spaces for a studio apartment. Why are we doing that? You know, and, and, and these types of things. There was some adjustments to dimensional requirements that we had for. That really varied from what the, the standard was, not just in the Commonwealth, but in the country. That was, those were kind of recommended to inspire our traffic and parking folks. We had a couple of other issues that came up, such as loading areas downtown, you know, with Amazon trucks coming up, things like that. That's what number C was about. D is probably one of the most, it, it's important, but it, it just tidies things up. When the planning board or really whoever issues a. A site plan approval in the downtown overlay district. As of right now, the applicant would have a choice whether to utilize downtown overlay district regulations. Or the underlying district, which would be central business or business. The merits of that, we're going to debate because I, I personally am not comfortable with that. But for the time being, that's what we have. The other, but when you're also talking about the downtown overlay district, we're also talking about special permits. And that's come, that's becoming more and more frequent when we did the, for example, the microbreweries, marijuana. A number of these, there, the planning board is asked to approve a special permit and not a site plan. So, what, one of the clarifications we're making is that if you're applying for a special permit in the downtown overlay district. The downtown overlay district criteria applies to your special permit. Just, it's, we were doing it anyway, but it's just like putting it in a nice bow. And the last one, E, is. It, it's to do with, with accessory. Home occupations. And in the case of what's considered a trade shop, and there's a difference between a trade shop and like, say, air dresser. Or a professional officer source. The renewal period was one year. And that makes sense when you're not sure exactly what's going to happen with the business. But now we've run into a situation where we have people that have been in business ten, twenty years, we've got no problems. There, it's literally, they're constantly before the board or supposed to be because we have to monitor that and it doesn't always, doesn't always happen like that. But they have to be in front of the board, literally like nine months of the year, they're in the application process. So, what this does is it allows the zoning board of appeals. The option where they can extend the renewal period for special permit. After the initial period has been successfully completed. So, that's, I, I think that basically addresses everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions if not.
Yep, I think they're fine by me. Any questions from the board? No, all right, is there a motion? Oh, Justine, you're, you're muted.
Somebody motioned.
Now, now that you're three quarters of the way through it.
Exactly, someone else could have just started talking over me. All right, sorry. Motion to refer the presented zoning bylaw draft controls to the planning board for approval. And subsequent return to the select board for final approval and inclusion in the warrant for special town meeting, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, have a good night, Bill. I am going to skip over the goals topic and we'll move on. We'll add that on to the next meeting to get them finalized. Town administrator report.
I just asked that, you know, the public take a look at what the staff has put together. And we'll go into too much detail at this late hour, but I want to offer, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to the board for. Approving a public health agent that's full-time and it's going to make really all the difference to my office. So, thank you so much for your consideration on that.
Any comments or questions on the, the report? Okay. We will move on. I am not going to give any type of a chair's report. It's our next meeting, September eighth, so. We have a couple of weeks before then. And there is a, there is a budget subcommittee meeting that has been scheduled that is coming up. There is a, um, there is a budget subcommittee meeting that has been scheduled, that is coming up, uh, give me a second, I can give you the date.
When we.
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. The twenty-fourth, don't forget the, uh, the duck race that's scheduled for next Sunday, the twenty-second. Um, and then there was one other meeting that's been scheduled, oh, our five-on-five. Is scheduled before our next regular scheduled meeting, um, scheduled for the thirty, or at least maybe we haven't heard back yet from the schools to confirm. So maybe that's why you haven't heard. But the, the schedule that was put, the date that was put on the schedule was the thirty-first of August. But we have not yet, I guess that's not yet confirmed through Greg.
Oh, was that the one that was going to be at the Mill and May?
No, this was going to be the, uh, five-on-five, it's us with the schools.
Right, but we're meeting at Mill and May?
No. Not that I was aware of.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think we thought that when we were at Mill and May.
It's, it's.
I thought, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, everything's being done remotely.
Oh.
So it would be via Zoom, but I don't know if that's been finalized yet, but at least if, if you can, put it on your calendar and I see Natasha's still hanging in, so, uh. I don't know if she's heard anything about it, but, uh.
I'm sleeping, no, I'm just kidding, uh, uh, no, I haven't heard anything, um, to be honest, but. I'm, I'm sure maybe Thursday it might come up with superintendent because we've been, um, that's our next meeting, so.
Okay, and then there was also a date proposed for. The tri-board meeting of September twenty-ninth, that's far off, so, um. I'll have to speak to Greg on the thirty-first, the, uh, because perhaps that'll be changed.
But the five-on-five is tentative for the thirtieth?
Tentative for the thirty-first, thirty-first, Tuesday.
Right.
Glad I mentioned it.
Yes, me too.
Yeah.
All right.
You, can you, I'm sorry, David, sorry, can you reiterate what that is, I just want to make sure I'm noting that to.
Yeah.
Pass along as well in case.
The five-on-five is a, is, uh, a meeting that we want to have just between the two, um, main elected boards.
Yeah, I remember it came up before, I just don't remember the date that, um, was.
August, August thirty-first was the proposed date that Greg sent, Greg sent to me. He was going to be speaking to Brian and Lydia to confirm that that date works for everybody.
And, okay.
We hadn't.
That was going to be at seven o'clock, David?
That was the, that was the originally scheduled plan, but we hadn't gotten, Greg had given me that date and I told him ask. And it hadn't, uh, you know, we hadn't heard back from anybody, I haven't heard back from Greg yet, so.
I know that Brian had confirmed with us the town budget subcommittee meeting for next week, but, um, I hadn't heard yet, so I will circle on my end to. See if that may have got dropped in the, in the shuffle along the way.
Megan, are you aware of anything on that, on that trial?
I'm not, but I, I'm not, but I, I'm going to connect with Greg on Monday, so I'll make sure he ends out the information to everyone.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
So at least have it on your radar, if it doesn't work for people, then we'll just shift the date. So that's it for me, um. Justine?
I just something really quick, I just wanted to give a quick update that I, I attended the, um, the MSBA, uh, meeting yesterday, uh, Green Meadow. Building committee meeting, um, and, uh, basically we're working with Collier, which is the OPM. And they're going to be moving forward with getting, uh, the RFS out, um, for, uh, seeking a design, uh, a designer. Um, and we'll be moving forward with the process of, um, entering into the feasibility study part of it. So I will be sure to give updates as, as those move forward, um, but they're getting, we're making some progress.
Right. Chris?
One more step.
Armand?
Happy birthday, Dave.
Oh, thank you.
Should we sing?
No, it's recorded.
A couple of things, I participated in the, um, final housing production, uh, plan working group and they're going to have a. A final report prepared, uh, I believe they're going to be, um, in front of the board on the twenty-first of September. So I don't know if that's going to be in an agenda, something that Dave you're probably going to have to look into. Um, and I also, uh, participated with the fire station building committee and, uh, things are moving along, they're on time, they're on project so far and, uh. It's, uh, looking good, uh, so far. Now, you guys, you guys see the pictures anyway, it looks, uh, the only.
Yeah, that big, that big round.
That looked like the, uh, that we finally found where the dinosaurs were. Yeah, yeah, I know Plymouth Rock actually got misplaced.
I was thinking that's, that was, that resulted in the demise of the dinosaur, but, uh, Jeff?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, great, is there a motion to, to adjourn?
To move.
All in favor, wave, thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Good job getting through this, this, this difficult night, so.
Good night.
Take care.
Thanks, Dave.